Members of council and staff, can you please take your seats? Thank you. Members of council, I'm going to call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, February 12th, to order. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay. We have quorum. Members of council, because quorum could be a challenge for the day, I'm going to ask that you keep your cameras on all the time, even when you're not speaking. Once we do have a quorum issue, we'll manage that at the, towards the end of the, or at the appropriate time. Decorations of community interest. I see none, Mr. Clerk. We have none. And there are no statutory public meetings. Mayor Carter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I hope you can hear me this morning. I'd like to move a motion to alter the agenda, departing items 8.1 and 8.2 forward, please, sir.
Okay, so Mayor Carter's moved the motion. It's been seconded by council. So this is to change the order? And then I'll come back to you, Mayor Carter. So a motion to change the order of the agenda, moved by Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilor Mayor Piatturi. On changing the order, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none? Mayor Carter, you're moving, you're going to move item eight. We'll deal with one at a time. Yeah, so we're going to go to the mover of the motion now. Counselor Leahy on 8.1 as the mover.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, and Counselor Yamada?
So what, and when do we, are we not doing the delegations?
No, the order's been changed. Delegations will still have the opportunity to speak, but the motions are being brought forward now.
Okay, well, I'd like to read the motion.
I'm sure, is Counselor Yamada online as a seconder? I'll need to hear Counselor Yamada.
I am, I, I, I'm here, Chair Henry.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Leahy. Yeah, just hang on here. So, 8.1.
So I just, I'm trying to pull it up here. The, uh, motion is not there.
Counselor Leahy, I'm going to have the clerk read it into the record if you can't find it.
Um, yeah, sure, that's fine. If he could do that, just start, that's fine, and then I'll have my speaking notes.
Okay, wait one second. We'll have, we'll have the clerk bring it up on screen. Counselor Leahy, can you see it?
Um, yes, I can. All right. May I go now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you so much. "Whereas the Durham Region Council condemns in the strongest terms possible the recent acts of antisemitism and hate discovered at the Whitby Public Library, and restates its commitment to an inclusive and welcoming community for all Durham residents. And whereas Durham Region Council reiterates its support for the past National Action Summit on antisemitism, which had the participation of the federal, provincial, and local governments. And whereas Durham Regional Council should commit to looking for ways to educate residents about antisemitism and ways to combat all forms of hate, including antisemitism, including a possible combating antisemitism campaign. And whereas Regional Council in the past has expressed support for other communities experiencing hate and condemned racist behaviors, including but not exclusive to Islamophobia, anti-black racism, and anti-Asian hate. Therefore be it resolved that Durham Regional Council direct the CAO to report on the possibility of establishing a protocol, policy, to notify various human rights organizations with hate-motivated acts that might not reach the threshold of criminality, but alleged targeted communities when they are identified or discovered by regional staff, and that the report mentioned above be undertaken in consultation with human rights organizations that include but are not exclusive to Beni Brith, the National Council of Canadian Muslims, the Centre for Israeli and Jewish Affairs, CIJA, and the Urban Alliance on Race Relations, and that the CAO include any other region of Durham organizations in the consideration process. The intent of the policy is to assist organizations in the collection of empirical evidence related to hate activities not meeting the threshold of crime." Members of council, um, I believe that Durham Region is the best community in Canada. Let me repeat that. Durham Region is the very best community in Canada to live, but we are not perfect. Last August, we woke up to the news that some fool had burned a swastika into the playing field at Prince of Wales Park. That thug or set of thugs shattered the idyllic sense of security that we all share. We live in a great community, all eight municipalities within Durham. We live in a great area. We live next door to our friends, not next door to strangers. Our community values are the reason why so many people from so many parts of the country and so many parts of the world come to settle here and continue to do so. Those of us who were born and raised in Whitby are not used to this type of hate-filled vandalism. All of us in council condemn this hateful act. All members of council here are interested in fighting this hate. In Whitby, we held a town hall with members of the Jewish community, and most council members attended. I went one step further, and I reported to the tip line at Beni Brith Canada. For those unaware, Beni Brith is Canada's oldest human rights organization, and this is their 150th anniversary mazel tov to them. At the town hall, we heard that for the community, this was not a singular act. I vividly recall one woman talk about the fear and frustration of having her child being subjected to Nazi graffiti at school with not as much help from the school administration as she would like. As a former Catholic school board trustee and a father of three, I could understand how frustrating it could be to know that the organization sworn to protect and educate your kids was deaf and tone deaf to your concerns. Fast forward to just last month, and we have two more incidents of hate-motivated antisemitic vandalism, both occurring at the Whitby Central Library. The same location where we lit the menorah with our friends from the Jewish community just in December. Again, I contacted Beni Brith and reported the incidents to their tip line. After I spoke about this incident, I got a call from someone who asked me to tone it down and stop worrying about our reputation, like, because you might, you might ruin it. I've, my opinion, if you don't stand against the hate, then you stand with the haters. It's a binary choice. My motion asks for the staff to report on hate vandalism to be reported to human rights organizations like Beni Brith Canada, Centre for Israel-Jewish Alliance, the National Council of Canadian Muslims, and the Urban Alliance on Race Relations. The NCCM have advised me that they will be looking at ways to collaborate with the town or the region if they're asked. This motion allows these groups to monitor what is happening in communities like ours in real time. To be clear, I'm not asking the region to report vandalism crimes on private property. I'm asking staff to develop a protocol that report hate-filled vandalism on regional property within a few days to the appropriate group. Police often report these crimes, but only on an annual basis. The exponential growth of Islamophobic, antisemitic, and anti-black racist incidents are growing rapidly. Annual reporting is not giving them access to the dynamic numbers. The other piece to consider is that there's all the pieces that are awful but lawful, and that's why it's so important that we report as much of the incidents as possible to these human rights organizations. Mr. Chair and members of council, I am hoping that this motion will pass unanimously so we can get staff to report back at a future date, and we can tell that moment from Whitby, from the town hall, that we all helped and we were not deaf to their cries for help. If we pass this motion, we are saying loud and clear that Durham Region is a welcoming and the best community in Canada. So I'm hoping, members of council, that we can go through that piece. Looking forward to hearing from the delegates that can speak to the challenges and the importance of this. And one of the critical pieces, of course, is to report on the lawful but awful, whereas it's not covered under Section 319 in the Criminal Code, and this is why it's so important for us to have an internal protocol. I think that uses up my time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Leahy, as per the rules, you'll need to turn your camera on.
Sure.
Thank you. To the seconder, Counselor Yamada?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to support this motion due to the comments that have been communicated by Counselor Leahy. You know, over the past 10 years, I've had the opportunity to work with the folk, our growing Jewish community here, with Rabbi Bornstein and the congregation that he's growing and leading. And, and, you know, when the attack on that mosque, oh, sorry, on the, on the synagogue in Pittsburgh occurred back in 2018, Chairman, you and I showed up to that vigil hosted by Chabad of Durham Region. The work that they're doing here in our community is important work, and we're seeing that growth with menorah lightings in Ajax, Pickering, Whitby, and, and other municipalities. You know, I, every time I get to hear the rabbi speak, I, I learn something new. And, and the work that they're doing to fight antisemitism in a world brought on by October 7th, where peaceful Jewish individuals at a music festival had congregated, were killed and some taken as hostages. We have seen a growth of, or a rise of antisemitism in the community, whether it's swastikas in parks or washrooms, or how Jewish people are feeling when they go out in public. So I'm happy to support this motion here today, and I would hope that it would pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Lee? Counselor Lee, we cannot hear you. Still can't hear you. What we'll do is I'll go to Mayor Schumer and come back to you. Mayor Schumer? Could you push your button again, please? Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Chair Henry. And I guess really, I'm just looking for clarification, because I guess what this is asking for is a report from the CAO on the possibility of producing those policies. Am I reading this correctly?
Madam CEO, is that how you see it?
I would like to ask the movers to clarify that. I actually interpreted it the other way, that I was being asked to bring forward a protocol. So I think that's a great question. Mayor Schumer, maybe we could get some clarification.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, no, the objective is to bring for a protocol at this time. That was what we're looking for. The police already capture the hate pieces. We're looking for a protocol that captures more than just that. That's what we're looking for, is a protocol.
Mayor Schumer?
Okay, thank you. And, and, I mean, I guess I can save my comments or questions for when that report comes, because, uh, you know, rights are, are a big thing. And I fully get and, and agree with the intent here, but I can only suspect this could be full of legal landmines. And I guess the, I guess the only question I will ask at this time is that in the event of one of these, you know, awful but lawful, you know, events take place, and we, as the region, actually know who committed it, would we be reporting that individual's name, or just the simple fact that it took place?
We'll go to our CAO first.
You raise some very good issues there in terms of what we would do. In general terms, we would report to DRPS as needed. There's a risk also in going to various community agencies that you're further inciting, the, the violence and opinions that you're trying to address. So in fact, reporting back on the feasibility of this policy, our protocol may be a better way to start. Thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll save the rest of, of my concerns and that for maybe when the report, report comes to us, because I don't want to get the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, we'll try again.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Oh, thank you. So I appreciate the intent of the mover and seconder. I understand there is a rise of antisemitic and Islamophobic attacks in the region, and absolutely it's troublesome. But I'm, I'm, my, my, my struggle goes with, you know, I, I can, can perhaps the CAO or, you know, our Director of Diversity explain what hate activity not meeting the threshold of a crime? What's an example of that?
I'm struggling, and I'm looking at Allison, who I think is struggling as well. She's going to give it a shot. Over to you, Allison.
Thank you, through the chair. We recently released a campaign in partnership with DRPS around reporting a hate crime, and there is some language on there that speaks to propaganda, that speaks to, you know, incidents that don't necessarily meet the threshold. I can pull more information from you, from the Attorney General's site and from some of that campaign information, but I don't have that on here right now. But some of this will be, as I said, lower threshold, so maybe language, hate language, some incidents of graffiti as well, but I can get more direct information for you, Counselor.
Sure. I would definitely want that, and I, in fact, please share it with all of council, because my concern is, and it's even spoken by the mover, it's lawful but awful. And now we are asking the CAO's office to determine what is awful. And there's a whole myriad of political, you know, inferences that can be made by that, and it's, it's, it leads to a level that I'm very uncomfortable with, although I understand the plight of our Jewish and Muslim and Black and Asian, you know, minorities who are suffering at the, at the hands of this. But at the same time, though, I don't want Durham Region to be in a position to, for lack of a better phrase, take sides in political arguments that we should, for all intents and purposes, be neutral in. So, you know, if it's lawful, then it's lawful. Like, what, I think are the, the threshold of asking the CAO's office to report on lawful activity that is awful, like, who are we to decide? So I, I understand this is asking for a report, so very similar to Mayor Schumer's kind of comments, I guess I'll wait for the report. But I really caution this council of, you know, there's no disrespect to the CAO's office, but it's, it's a burden that I wouldn't want to put on anybody to determine what they determine to be awful at the region. You know, we do have DRPS. I absolutely think DRPS is absolutely suited to deal with these, and if our ask is to get DRPS to report monthly statistics or weekly statistics, then by all means, I will absolutely, fully support that. But to have a political body make the decision to decide what is awful and what is not, I'm very uncomfortable with that, because it leads to council, in a sense, determining very political decisions that we may not have the knowledge or skill set to truly debate. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, no, point of order. I don't know how many times I got to say to raise that. The whole point of having the delegates, they're experts in this field and will address those different pieces, and can answer all those questions around what difference between lawful is awful. I'm using their language when they're speaking to that. The fact that Beni Brith reports the, the hate crimes across Canada and gets about 961 from the police reports from various organizations, and yet have 4,000 other incidents of hate, like, they are the experts in that and can answer all those questions, just like they did at Whitby Council. So that's where the information is and why the delegates were to be first before we debated. So can we have the delegate speak so we can answer those questions, so people are informed when they make their decision?
Counselor, the delegates will have a chance to speak after the issues are dealt with before you. That's, is the...
How does that make any sense, when they can answer those questions that people have right now, specifically?
Counselor Leahy, there's processes for council, and I cannot debate a motion to out, change the order of the agenda. It's been changed. The item is on the floor.
All right, well, can we not have a motion to change agenda, or two-thirds suspend the rules to change agenda back so we can answer those questions, so people are informed before they make a decision? I'd move that, please.
Okay, so, so what you're doing is, Mr. Clerk, look to you for the word. He's looking to alter the, a motion to alter the agenda.
So that the delegates, who are experts in this field, can speak so people are informed?
Counselor Leahy? Mr. Clerk? Okay, just to make it easier than me trying to explain it, because then we'll be going back and forth, I'll have the clerk explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the motion under item 8.1 is currently on the floor. It's been duly moved and seconded. Before a further motion to change the order could be brought forward, the current motion would need to be withdrawn by the mover and seconder. It could then be removed and seconded after the order change happens.
Just a point of clarification, so I understand, Mr., through the chair, to the clerk, if I'm allowed?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I don't want to not have the ability to have the motion back on the floor, so if we withdraw this, then have a motion to adjust the agenda, then we can reintroduce the motion after, after the delegate speak? I just want to make sure that that, because I don't want to withdraw it if I can't bring it back.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's acceptable.
Okay, all right. So then I'll withdraw the motion, and I'll look at the seconder so that we can put a motion on the floor to adjust the agenda, so that we can have the delegates, who are experts in this field, answer those questions before, so people have an informed decision before they vote.
So Counselor Yamada, do you want to withdraw your motion? Your seconding of that motion?
I will agree to the direction of Counselor Leahy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clerk? So members of council, I'm going to have to call for recorded vote to do this. It is technically a suspension of the rules, Mr. Clerk? To revert back to the order. So, Mr. Clerk, can you explain, please?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, to try to restore a bit of clarity on this, this would be a, a motion to suspend the rules to, to essentially rescind the change to the order of business, so that the delegations would proceed before the motion returns to the floor, and members can continue to debate and vote on it.
It's a reconsideration, which is still two-thirds? Yep. So we'll have to call, Mr. Clerk, it's, there's, I don't have everybody in the room, so we'll have to do it as a recorded vote then. Okay, I'm, so Counselor Mayor Piatturi?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and everyone. I just thought maybe we could do it differently, because this is going, the mechanics of this is going to end up causing us to redo everything again. So I think the intent was to have the questions answered. Could we not waive the rules of the procedure in which we require us to go a certain way and have these questions asked? To, to essentially suspend those and allow the questions, so that we can just proceed as, as indicated? So that may be easier.
This, members, this, this is getting very complicated, and from a procedural point of view, I want to make sure that we're right. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to do my best to untangle the Gordian knot a little bit. The motion has already been withdrawn, so at this point, there's no motion on the floor. Whether we go about it that way or this particular way, both will require a two-thirds vote to undo a previous decision to change the order of business, and achieves essentially the same effect. So I, I think at this point, the difference is negligible. If we proceed with this vote, it does require two-thirds. If the motion fails to change the order back, then the current motion, 8.1, would need to be reintroduced by a mover and seconder.
Thank you.
Counselor Chauvin?
Point of order, so the original motion that we voted on was to move 8.1 and 8.2 to the front of the agenda. 8.1 has now been withdrawn, but 8.2 has not.
You're absolutely right.
So the original motion is, has 8.2 as the next item on our agenda.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If the motion to reconsider the change to the order of business applies to both of those items, and we'll just look for clarity from Counselor Leahy as the mover, and Counselor Yamada as the seconder of that reconsideration, then we would revert to the order of the agenda as printed, essentially, which would mean that we wouldn't hear directly from the delegates, we'd actually proceed to the presentation, so as they're the next order of business.
And again, just so for clarity, so it would go to the presentations, then we would go to the delegates, then we could, we could, we would go to the motions.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Then we would need a new motion to change the order to bring forward the notice of motions, if that was council's wish at that time. Otherwise, they would come up in the regular order of business.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The objective is to hear from the delegates first, who are experts in the field, so yes, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, on, on the vote, I will call it now. I need a recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on a two-thirds majority to reconsider and rescind the motion to change the order of business is starting now.
So, members of council, that fails. Mr. Clerk? So Counselor Leahy, would you like to reintroduce your motion?
Yes, yeah, happy to talk about it. I was hoping we could hear from the experts to answer those questions, but I'm happy to move both, and that would be great.
Counselor, Counselor Yamada, second?
Uh, second.
Okay, thank you.
I'm seconding those motions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
They've spoken to these, can I go to Counselor Nicholson? Good morning, Counselor Nicholson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. A question to the clerk. Would it be in order, at this point, having a motion on the floor, to table that motion to allow the delegations to make their presentations, and then lift from the table and vote on it?
Great idea.
Just one second. We're dealing with one item. I'll come to you. Thank you, Counselor Chauvin. Counselor Leahy? Thank you. This is a significant event here today, and while the rules allow you not to be in the chambers, I would have appreciated you being here today, but we will continue...
Yes, I was on my way, and I would have been there after the presentations, but then the change of the order really had an impact.
I'm not going to go back and forth, so, Mr. Clerk, Counselor Nicholson has asked you something.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Nicholson, you're correct. A motion to table could be introduced at this time. It would require a majority vote to be adopted, and following that, the item would need It would require a majority vote to be adopted, and following that, the item would need to be lifted from the table later in the agenda.
Thank you, then. Having that answer, I'd like to move that the motion by Counselor Leahy and Yamada be tabled at this time. And that we can hear, once we hear the delegations, we can lift it. So I move a tabling at this time.
Happy to second.
So Counselor Nicholson, are you tabling both? Both items? I can't, we can't hear you, sorry.
There's only one motion on the floor at this time that I can table.
Okay, we'll have to table eight point two separately if we have to get that through. Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, on the tabling motion, we need a simple majority?
And ask for a recorded vote?
Recorded vote called by Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to table item eight point one is starting now.
So the tabling motion carries. So, Mr. Clerk, we're back to the agenda as. Well, now we need to deal with eight point two?
Table that as well?
Okay, Counselor Leahy's moved to table. Looking for seconder.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Nicholson. On the tabling motion, simple majority. Members of council, with not enough members of in this room, I cannot tell the vote between the screen and in here. So I'm gonna have to call for a recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the motion to table item eight point two is starting now.
So the tabling motion carries. Mr. Clerk, we're back to the beginning of the meeting? So, members of council, we'll follow the agenda. We're on to presentations. Item four point one is Mayor Elizabeth Roy and Allison Hector Alexander, co-chairs of the Durham Local Immigration Partnership. It's item seven point two. Mr. Clerk, should we bring seven point two forward at the end of this and deal with it? Okay, we will.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I'm proud to bring you the Durham Local Immigration Partnership 2025-2030 Community and Inclusion Plan. Along with Allison Hector Alexander. I've been the co-chair of the Durham Lip Council since 2023, and have worked with the community leaders you'll be hearing from today to create a, to create a better settlement and integration experience for newcomers in Durham. As WIPPI's newcomer population continues to grow, now the municipality with the third largest share of immigrants in Durham, twenty eight point four percent. I support and endorse the activities and initiatives outlined in the community plan you'll be hearing about shortly. I'm excited about how this strategy can guide the region and its community partners to create a more welcoming and prosperous Durham region for all. I will now hand it over to the two members of our Durham Lip Council to share more about the community plan. Dr. Marina Morgenstern, Associate Professor and Director of Department of Social Work at Trent University, and Hermia Corbett, Executive Director of Community Development Council Durham. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Dr. Marina Morgenstern, and thank you for lovely introduction. We are here today to present to you the 2025-20. No problem. Is it better now?
Yes.
Thank you. I rarely speak like this, so I, wonderful. So we're here today to present to you the 2025-2030 Community and Inclusion Plan of the D-Lip. This plan is a result of wide collaboration, numerous consultations with residents, and input from partner organizations. We called it "We All Belong Here" to drive home the idea, the focus of the importance of welcoming, belonging, and inclusion. We know that when everyone in the community, newcomers as existing, longtime residents alike, feel they belong, we have the needed foundation to build not only strong and resilient community, but a thriving community. And I'm sure that everyone here is in favor of that. So before we introduce the plan, let me maybe introduce to you what D-Lip is and what it does, just to provide some background and contextual information. So, no, go back. Okay. So, local immigration partnerships are a mechanism to develop community-based planning to address the needs of newcomers in Canada. So overall, in Canada, there is about eighty local immigration partnerships. Thirty of them are in Ontario. Durham Local Immigration Partnership is an advisory body that consists of fifteen leaders in the community who come from various areas of community life, such as chambers of commerce, community development, institutions of higher education, employment services, settlement services, public libraries, public health, and so on and so forth. And this idea of bringing together leaders from multiple various areas ensures that the response plant is comprehensive, is community-based, and is built to ensure the success of the mission. So one of the things that Durham Leader, Durham Local Immigration Partnership does is not, is working on data, on collecting data and doing research about the experiences of newcomers here in the region, the opportunities they have, the barriers they face, as well as the best practices known regionally, nationally, as well as globally, to welcome newcomers into different localities. And this is all again with the purpose of informing, planning, and implementation of the newcomers' integration. Another example of what D-Lip does is the Durham Humanitarian Response, and this is where I pass it to Hermia to tell you about it.
Thank you, Marina. Good morning, everyone. So the Durham Humanitarian Response Program is an emergency resettlement response, and it offers temporary accommodations and wraparound supports to asylum claimants who are seeking refuge in Durham. So the D-Lip, with the collaboration of social services as well as CDCD, they support and help to coordinate supports and services that are delivered on site in three hotels that currently support the temporary accommodations for the asylum claimants. We also, they also oversee the data collection and analysis, so reports are submitted monthly, and this is analyzed. And they also participate in intergovernmental discussions to monitor policy and program changes that are related to asylum seeker response locally. So to provide some context, I will share the importance of immigration in Durham region. So as we all know, Durham region has a growing and diverse immigrant population. According to Statistics Canada 2021, newcomers represent twenty eight percent of Durham's total population. Ajax has the highest percentage of forty two point eight percent, followed by Pickering, WIBB, and Brock with the lowest of eight point two percent. In 2021, approximately forty seven percent of immigrants in Durham arrive through the economic admission category, followed by thirty five percent under the family reunification, and sixteen percent as refugees. All of these categories highlight the various pathways through which immigrants contribute to Durham's population and economy. Immigrants in Durham are highly educated. Sixty two point eight percent have a post-secondary certificate, diploma, or degree, with nearly thirty percent holding a bachelor or master's degree or higher. As we all know, immigrants also bring an educated workforce in Durham, and that makes a significant contribution to our economy. Data shows over time that the median income steadily increases with the most significant income gains typically happens within three to five years of a newcomer's arrival. Immigrants are also entrepreneurs in Durham. Between 2008 and 2018, the number of self-employed immigrants in the region more than doubled, increasing from over five thousand to over eleven thousand. These entrepreneurs, they play a critical role in driving innovation, creating jobs, and contributing to the local economy. Also, in Durham, immigrants are active members of the community. They bring new energy, they help to make our community more diverse and vibrant, they participate in local events, contribute to the economy, and help build stronger, more connected neighborhoods. So the 2025-2030 Community Plan builds on the success of Durham Immigration and Inclusion Community Plan that was first developed in 2020-2024, which focused on the critical role of immigration in driving Durham region's economic growth. We'll now just highlight some of the pillars from the 2024 plan.
Okay, so as Hermia mentioned, the current plan builds on the success of the 2020-2024 Durham Immigration and Inclusion Plan, which main pillars were economic prosperity, service coordination, and community belonging. And some prominent examples of action implemented in the past four years. Many of you may remember the anti-discrimination campaign that we had two years ago here in Durham. Another example is a very successful development of the local employer toolkit, which comes to support employers in the region in their efforts to integrate newcomers in the job market. So the incoming 2025-2030 Community and Inclusion Plan builds, also has three pillars, slightly different ones. And these are to champion collective action, to build inclusive communities, and embrace innovation and responsiveness. I will now take a few minutes to maybe give you a bit of specifics with regard to each pillar. So the championing collective action. As I mentioned before in the introduction, it is our mutual goal to ensure that region becomes not just strong and resilient community, but a thriving community. And in order to to do so, we need to champion collective action. And so D-Lip, through networking, through research, through collaboration with multiple partners, is there to promote understanding of newcomers' experiences, amplify their voice, and this way to educate everyone about newcomer experience. This collaborative approach ensures that policies and programs in the region aren't just based on evidence, but are evolving and flexible enough to address the evolving and upcoming needs of newcomers as well as longstanding residents. And this is very much connected to the second pillar about building inclusive communities. So we mentioned before that Durham, as you know, is a growing community, evolving community, like many others in GTA. And like many others in GTA, it has changing needs and evolving needs. And one of those needs is really with the influx of newcomers, is the creation of inclusive and welcoming community. As I mentioned before, we know that when our communities, everyone in the community feel they belong, feel welcomed, this makes community stronger. And that, I believe, is the goal that everybody here shares. So in this sense, D-Lip doesn't only work for the benefit of newcomers. Newcomers and conversations between newcomers and and long-term residents will be implemented in order to create space for dialogue, collaboration, in order for everyone to learn the benefits that newcomers bring to the community. And to this end, one of the ideas is a newcomers' day. Now, I can tell you, as somebody who did research with newcomers in this region, I, when reading this plan and when working on this plan, I was very much happy to see that lots of recommendations and calls for actions expressed by the newcomers became part of this plan. And finally, in order to make this plan viable, it needs to be innovative and responsive. So it is not just a plan for today. We see this plan as a blueprint for the future of newcomer integration in Durham region. So to summarize for you, the main actions or the main intents of the plan are accessibility and equity, cultural inclusivity, community engagement, and sustainable support systems. This plan will launch in spring 2025, and D-Lip will inform the council about the progress on the annual basis. In closing, we want to emphasize again that using this plan is beneficial to the entire community. And so we want, with your support and endorsement today, we can create a community that is truly thriving, truly welcoming, and truly representative of all people, where everyone feels empowered to participate, to contribute, and to thrive. Your leadership, support, and commitment are essential for the success of this plan. And I believe that now more than ever, with the news coming from the South, we need to stay united and express our friendship and the warmth of our hearts toward our neighbors. So we can stand united should we need to resist some of the threats coming from the South. Thank you very much. We are now open for questions, and the staff of the D-Lip will be happy to answer any of the questions you have.
Okay, well, thank you, and we do have some questions. First would be Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I.
I just wanted to say that I attended a meeting at the CDCD or talking about including, the inclusion of seniors from our diverse communities. And I went there to present what the town of Ajax offers, but I actually walked away going, we're really behind the eight ball because in order for, we were not like language-equipped. We don't know how to access the different, the diversity in our north. We have such a hu, as mentioned, we have the highest diversity in Ajax. So we really do need your help in trying to navigate how to figure out how to get, how to connect and how to make them feel welcome. Because it was, it was interesting. I mean, transit always comes up, right?
There has to, I'm sorry, it has to be a question.
Okay. So, what, sorry, what would, sorry, I hardly ever speak. What would be your advice to us in trying to navigate that situation?
Thank you for the question. Certainly, I believe in collaboration. I think we have a lot of agencies in Durham Region, including CDCD, who have had many years of experience working with diverse populations. I think it's learning from each other, learning with each other, also turning into the LEAP as well, who also have that expertise within the regional entity. And we can weave the community as well. Sometimes we have to ask them what their needs are. How can we better serve them? How can we support you? How can we do this together? How can we grow and be vibrant together as a community? So I think.
You really become the connector between the community and municipality. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, question?
Thank you very much and thank you for the presentation. I noticed Clarendon numbers weren't there for immigrant population and neither was Oshawa. So I was just wondering if you have those figures?
We do. Thank you for the question. And so in terms of, so for, as I mentioned, Ajax is forty-two point seven percent. Pickering is thirty-seven point three. Whitby is twenty-eight point four and Brock is sixty-eight point two. Do we have Oshawa, Clarendon?
We can pull that for you and have that to you in a couple of minutes, Counselor.
Okay, I was just wondering, I, because I see the growth in our community and I didn't see figures and Oshawa, I was surprised Oshawa was omitted too. I look in the north. I was just wondering if there was a reason or rationale for that.
No, they could have just been.
Thank you.
We can pull that for you, but also keep in mind that those are, these numbers are from the twenty twenty-one census stats. But we can share that with you in a bit once we pull that. Oshawa's twenty-one point three percent for Oshawa and trying to find Clarendon. We will get Clarendon to you.
Okay.
Yes.
Nobody wants to, I don't think so. Everybody wants to live there. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Mayor Piatri?
Clarendon is eight point two percent.
Counselor?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair, again. Just wanted to ask a question. You're aware of an organization by the term or name Costi? Is that something that you're aware?
Yes, we are.
Yeah. Our families worked with them closely for a number of years. Obviously, we're not from Canada. I was born here, but of immigrant parents. And I think that a number of us in the room are in the same boat and category. Some actually came on boats, some came by plane. And I just wanted to know, because we're obviously trying to arrive at the same point, which is to help the process of newly, you know, arriving peoples. Just wondering whether or not we're working with organizations like that and how that works in our capacity. Because I'm not sure where the funding's going to come from for a process or a program like this. We're largely funded by the property tax base and we wouldn't want to be duplicating, you know, the resources and I guess the funds that are required to arrive at the need that we're trying to facilitate.
Okay, so I can start off. So the local immigration partnership has been funded by the federal government since two thousand and nine. So it has been consistently funded and we are now in the process of negotiating our new agreement, which is starting on April first. And so that, or the DLEAP in its entirety has been funded by the federal government. And I could pass it on to Hermia to speak to her program and that is offered through the Community Development Council of Durham.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So for CDCD, when we first partnered with the region to establish the Humanitarian Response Project, Costi served as a mentor to us in terms of looking at their best practices, looking at how they match individuals to residents who were willing to take on immigrants and refugees into their personal spaces. Also, CDCD is one of the lead agencies of the seven welcome centers in Ontario. And so it's Costi. Costi has a welcome center immigrant services in York Region. And all seven welcome centers, as EDs, we meet, program managers meet and we share best practices as well. Also, Costi is a member of UCASI. So I don't know if you know that umbrella term. And as members, we also advocate on behalf of the entire settlement sector for the province. So there are many points of interaction where we work with Costi or we learn from each other as well.
I appreciate that very much through you, Chair. Just a little sort of, it wouldn't be an anecdote, but a reality. And I know that this wouldn't apply to me or maybe to many of us in the room, but someone that's newly arriving, some of the stories that I've encountered and I've heard generationally or even now is that they just need help in terms of ease of use, customer service. So I wouldn't want us through you, Chair, to, I hate to use the term, get cute, but some of the more sophisticated and niceties that we offer may look good on paper. I just want us to be cognizant if we're going to be doing something like this, that portal or that, you know, organization, that program that we're developing is going to be easy and make their lives easier and something that they can understand as opposed to add layers. And that's why, you know, I'm asking the question. I'm sure you have that in mind and that's the direction we're going to go. But I think ease of use is something that we have to, you know, harmonize because the other organizations, some different layers, different, you know, interest, but obviously all trying to arrive at the same thing, that becomes onerous for people to navigate. So I just want us to be that, that ease. If we're going to do this, do it from that standpoint. And I really appreciate the opportunity through you, Chair, to ask questions. And we welcome the work that you do because obviously it's one. It is a reality that people may not have in the room and those that do are sensitive to it and understand that, that, you know, it's part of our work. So thank you.
So thank you very much. That exhausts the questions. At this time, Members of Council, it would be appropriate to bring this item forward, which is cow, twenty twenty-five cow dash six. Mayor Roy, would you move to move the recommendation located on page sixty of your agenda? Okay. And I'm looking for a second here. Counselor Anderson, the item's now on the floor? Yeah, well, it's on the floor. Is anyone wishing to comment? Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Allison, through you to Allison, just a quick question. We had a couple of months ago, a survey that was done of council and then it was going out to the public looking at, I'm going to summarize, you know, how marginalized groups, if they felt they were supported or not. I was somewhat critical. I think we had that report when eight, eight of council members had spoken and yet that group still chose to do a presentation to us on data that was very incomplete. It would seem to me that the public input on the data would tie into this. Are the two linked in any way?
So are you speaking about the overarching DEI strategy? That presentation, Mayor Foster? Is it that presentation?
So there have been a couple, but what stuck in my mind is, is again, we had a presentation based on responses from eight members, which I thought was ill-advised at the time. But the broader public consultation would certainly be valuable. So if that's one yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes, they will. So we have the overarching diversity, equity and inclusion strategy that we're continuing to work on. And this strategy will also feed into that. And this is where we speak to the reporting back to council. But I completely agree that the community consultation is very important and not only community, but also the different tables. So within the DLEAP, we have the community partners in diversity. We also have the newcomer advisory table and of course, the DLEAP council. And so we rely on that input to inform the plan, but also inform the work.
Okay, perfect. So there's, you know, there's valuable data out there that you're going to, I'm going to say you're going to double dip in a good way. Use on that side. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to staff. I guess the question is, so I appreciate the support. I just was trying to understand the costs or what the overall budget would be spent on that. So I, did I miss that?
No, so the budget is, I mentioned that the budget, we, our budget has historically since two thousand and nine been covered in its entirety by the federal government. And we are now in the process of renegotiating our new agreement for the next three years. Our new agreement should come into play April first. So we're just towards the end of going through negotiations with the federal government.
Okay, so there's no impact to the taxpayer base?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, and there's been no indication in your negotiation with the federal government that any of that would change?
No, not at this time. We have been provided for a notional amount. So we're discussing sort of the operations and where things are going to land. But at this point, no, we don't have any concerns.
Perfect. Now, I just want to double check. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Wu?
Yeah, thank you through the chair and thank you, Allison and Hermia and Marina for your presentation. Or we're speaking to the report now, sorry. Now, in the report, there's three categories. Economic admission, family reunification, refugees. One that is left out is humanitarian compassionate applicants and people who are accepted as immigrants for humanitarian reasons. Don't we have in that category, the ones that came from Ukraine? Would that Ukrainian fit into that category?
The Ukrainian pathway was a different pathway, the Quid visa. And so I'm not really sure in what category they would, they would fall under. They wouldn't fall under humanitarian and compassionate. Yeah, it's a temporary.
Yes, so thank you for the question. Ukrainians are temporary residents. They receive the full permanent resident status from the federal government and through the Quid visa, I believe they're here for three years. So yes, through the partnership with the region and the humanitarian response that was established in two thousand and twenty-two, we did serve Ukrainians as well, yes.
Now, are you able to map immigrants where they first land? Let's say if they arrive somewhere, then move to Durham Region? Because most immigrants, I'm only guessing that some of them, this wasn't their first point of settlement.
Certainly, so they would arrive in Pearson, may or may not have access services in Toronto. And I'm making a reference to asylum claimants. They would have access services in Toronto and then would have been referred on to other surrounding communities. And Durham typically is a point of interest and point of residence for individuals. And so we welcome them when they arrive here. Also, through the current humanitarian project that we're doing in collaboration with the region and social services, seventy-six percent of the individuals that have been housed have chosen Durham as their place of residence.
And also, the, in the report, it speaks to retention of the immigrants and certainly the ones that are part and parcel of our labor force and probably skilled labor force is the retention. And again, it's in the report, but do you want to give us an idea of what programs they have in place to do that?
To be able to retain immigrants in Durham, certainly. Well, CDCD's role is focus primarily on finding affordable and permanent housing for them. Of course, our preference is Durham, but individuals receive choice. Also, we do offer employment supports to assist them in being able to find suitable employment. We've, through the work of the LEAP, in terms of engaging employers, we connect with that network. Recently, in partnership with West World Education Services, Job Fair was done and it was very specific and targeted to asylum claimants and refugees. Also, in terms of establishing themselves, through the Catholic and district school boards, which we're also in partnership with, they are able to access language classes, which is English as a second language. So there are many steps and resources and services available to help them to fully settle and integrate in Durham.
And if I can add to that as a reminder that the region is the system service manager for employment services. And so for the folks who do have the status, they will have, they would have access to those employment support services as well. We're also in the process of partnering, being the co-lead with the Durham Unemployed Help Center to host Durham very specific refugee hiring event in March. And so those are some of the ways that we support newcomers to secure economic independence.
Right. No, just one question, just an observation. On the page Durham LIP council members, I notice that it's quite a distinguished group there, but they only see one male and that's Tom McDonald.
And he is here, he's here supporting us today, yes.
Thanks, Tom. You're in, you're in a flying group of council members. Thank you.
Okay, Members of Council, the item has been moved and segmented. It's on the floor. I will call the vote on item seven point two. All those in favor? In opposition, online, Mr. Clerk, seeing that carries. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next presentation. Erin Valant, Director of Housing Services at Home in Durham, update.
Thank you and good morning, Members of Council. So I am Erin Valant. I'm the Director of Housing Services here at the region of Durham. And today I'm here to provide you with an overview of community housing history as well as an update on the development of our new ten-year housing and homelessness plan. Next slide, please. Thank you. One of the questions that arose during the twenty twenty-five budget process was around the declining federal funding for social or community housing. This slide presents an overview of the history of community housing in Canada and in Ontario. The history of developing and funding community housing can best be described as a patchwork of programs. From around the nineteen fifty's through the nineteen seventy's, the federal and provincial governments worked together to create public housing for people living with low income. In the nineteen eighty's and through the nineteen ninety's, nonprofit and cooperative providers received federal or provincial funding to build and manage mixed-income communities for low-income households. Providers entered into agreements with either the provincial or federal government for the development of that project and depended on the funding stream. Then, in nineteen ninety-nine, the federal government downloaded its housing programs from the Canada Mortgage Housing Corporation to the provinces through the Canada-Ontario Social Housing Agreement. In two thousand and two, the Provincial Social Housing Reform Act transferred the responsibility for community housing to service system managers. Ontario is the only province that transferred this responsibility to the municipal level. And in January two thousand and twelve, the Social Housing Reform Act was replaced by the Housing Services Act, which sets the current rules for community housing and the roles and responsibilities of service system managers. So all of this is to say, and what this has resulted in, purpose-built rental stock relatively stagnated after around the seventies. So to add some perspective, from around nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty, in those two decades, about one million new rental units were built. And then fast forward in, from nineteen eighty to about the early twenty twenties, only about half that number of units were built in twice the amount of time, while the population of renter households also doubled. The situation is even more pronounced with non-market housing. During the peak of construction around the seventies and eighties, about forty thousand non-market units were built every year. And from the mid nineties to around, I think, two thousand and fifteen, less than four thousand units were built each year and many existing units were also lost during that time to repair or to private redevelopment. And if construction had stayed at previous levels, we would likely have around two million more non-market rental homes today. Next slide, please. So as previously stated, Ontario was the only province that transferred the responsibility for funding and administration of existing community housing to municipal service managers. One of the goals of this transfer was to provide more local control and flexibility in administering community housing. And as such, services. And as such, service managers are the primary funders of community housing for low to moderate income households. I should note that the chart before you hear does not include capital funding or homelessness funding streams to which all three levels of government contribute to through different programs. This really focuses on the administration of community housing. And again, one of the questions raised by council during the 2025 budget process was on the decline of federal funding. The decline, the gradual decline of federal funding was cemented through the Social Housing Agreement in 1999. And that was when the administration and funding of community housing was transferred to the provinces by the federal government. In this agreement, the federal funding for former federal projects was always intended to gradually decline as federal projects reached the end of their operating agreements. This funding is transferred to the provinces and in Ontario transferred to service system managers. And all federal funding will decline to zero by 2033. Importantly, under the National Housing Strategy, a program called the Canada-Ontario Housing Initiative, or COCHE, was developed to serve as an extension of the baseline federal funding over the term of the National Housing Strategy, which ends in 2028. And in Durham, this is currently our only funding source to support critical community housing capital repairs. And I'll speak more to this a little bit later. Next slide, please. Our role and responsibility as a service system manager. So the region of Durham acts as service system manager for both housing and homelessness under the Housing Services Act. This slide focuses on the housing component only, although there is some overlap. As service system manager, the region of Durham funds and monitors community housing providers across Durham. Community housing provides almost 30% of the rental housing supply in Durham and most of the affordable rental housing supply. This includes about 6,000 total units in community housing and about 4,500 of those units are rent gear to income. We currently work with 33 providers, including the Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation. And as service manager, we are required to maintain a minimum service level standard, which in Durham is 4,446 units. We are also responsible for developing, implementing and monitoring the comprehensive 10-year housing and homelessness plan. And that is to assess current and future local housing needs. And the plan must address housing and homelessness services and measure progress towards achieving objectives and targets. We are also required to maintain a centralized waitlist for rent gear to income, which is done through our Durham Access to Social Housing Waitlist, or DASH. Durham was actually the first service manager to develop and implement a vacancy-driven waitlist. And we currently support around 10,000 applicants. In addition to community housing providers, we also have agreements with landlords and private market rental buildings. These rent supplements allow tenants to pay rent gear to income and we bridge the gap between what they pay and market rent to the landlord each month. We have around 500 units in this portfolio. We also administer portable housing benefits, which are paid directly to the recipient and assist with the rental costs. The Durham Portable Housing Benefit is regionally funded and portable anywhere within Durham region. And the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit is portable anywhere within the province. Recipients receive a benefit that is the difference between roughly 30% of their income and average market rent. And we currently have about 970 of these benefits. We also operate the largest community housing provider in Durham, the Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation, or the DRLHC. Currently, the DRLHC portfolio is 100% rent gear to income across 23 sites totaling about 1,300 units. The DRLHC stock was mostly built during the 60s and 70s and requires significant ongoing investment in capital repairs. And it's also important to note that this work often does not result in modern accessibility standards or unit-based cooling due to the age and internal structures of these sites. And with the introduction of the Ashura Micro Homes and Beaverton Heights, DRLHC has also taken on operating transitional housing, which includes occupancy agreements instead of the leases under the Residential Tenancies Act. Next slide, please. So when responsibility for community housing was transferred by the province to municipal service managers, it included a legislated and prescribed funding formula for providers. So you'll see on the bottom right corner of that screen that there are three components in the calculation of how subsidies provided to community housing providers. The first is property tax subsidy, which is just a flow-through of actual property tax. The second is rent gear to income subsidy, which is again, 30, the difference between 30% of a tenant's income and the lesser of the benchmark or actual rent. And the third is the operating subsidy, which is generally just the difference between benchmarked revenue and benchmarked costs. And that includes the mortgage for the property. So you would have heard me use the word benchmark used here. The Housing Services Act implemented benchmarks, which are basically just a way to estimate costs of operating a housing project as well as estimated revenues, including rent levels. And it was intended to provide a standardized and fair way to determine operating costs and revenues, including rents across the province. However, they don't always reflect actual costs and revenues that are experienced by providers. So as an example, to illustrate this, a provider who increased their market rent still at an affordable level in order to try and generate sufficient revenue to offset critical capital repair needs. However, because they were already at the benchmarked rent, they can only realize that revenue increase on their market rent units, which is less than 25% of their total units and insufficient to meet their capital repair needs. In addition, a challenge occurs when providers reach the end of their mortgage. And you've heard us talk about end of mortgages over the last couple of years. But essentially, a $0 mortgage throws off this funding formula and typically financially disadvantages the provider. Next slide, please. So to respond to end of mortgages, in 2020, the province made changes to the Housing Services Act to create a new framework for community housing providers whose agreements or mortgages were ending. The updated regulations allow service managers to develop new agreements with community housing providers. And regulations provide baseline funding and operational rules to ensure the continued delivery of community housing and stability for tenants and co-op members, while also providing more flexibility to meet the needs of housing providers. This slide just provides a visual representation of providers across the region that either have or are reaching their end of operating agreement or end of mortgage. And as you can see, all federal providers, the ones in blue, have now reached their end of operating agreements. And for provincial providers, most will reach their end of mortgage in 2027 and 2028. And by 2031, all designated housing projects in Durham will have reached their end of operating agreement or end of mortgage and we will be fully in the new framework for community housing. This new framework is an opportunity to partner in new and better ways with community housing providers. But there is also a risk of potentially using, losing units if providers want to exit the system. And importantly, regional council has already made a commitment to reinvest any mortgage subsidy savings at the end of mortgages back into the community housing system. And the primary goal is to reinvest any savings back into the sector to strengthen it for future generations and to ensure critical capital repair and support needs are met. Next slide, please. In November 2024, on National Housing Day, we brought together community housing providers, landlords, community support agencies and developers to facilitate discussions to identify challenges and opportunities across the sector. Our goal is to identify areas to focus on in our role as service system manager. And these four catchment areas were the top four concerns. The first being escalating costs. Costs continue to increase annually for capital repair, unit turnovers, staffing, utilities, et cetera. As an example, we recently had noticed from a community housing provider that an eviction had a corresponding almost 100,000 unit repair bill to bring that unit back online to be filled again. While this is an extreme example, it does highlight the financial challenges of operating deeply affordable housing with limited revenue generation and increase in costs. Construction and development costs also make the development of deeply affordable or non-market housing challenging and almost always require an ongoing operating subsidy from the service manager. For long-term sustainability, most providers in Durham have inadequate capital reserves to address the significant capital repair needs of an aging infrastructure. Providers have also stressed that there is a shortage of resources for regular building condition assessments and expertise in financial planning and project management. Providers need more support in these areas to ensure that they are planning efficiently and effectively over longer periods of time. The application process for various funding programs can also be complex and time-consuming for providers with limited resources. And they often don't have staffing capacity to navigate funding applications and often don't know what is even available to apply to. In increasing complex needs, tenants who need supports across various health and social services areas are often experiencing challenges navigating different systems and coordinating the supports that they need. This includes supporting seniors who are aging in place, as well as increasing instances of hoarding that significantly impacts pest control challenges across the sector. Providers don't have the capacity or often the training to be the primary support or case management for tenants and often don't know who to turn to to get support. Neighbor conflicts are also common and can disrupt community vitality. And providers don't have the current resources to provide sufficient community building events and activities to foster a sense of community and to help build those relationships. Lastly, under critical capital repairs, the cost for capital repair work continues to increase and rental revenue increases are not able to keep pace. This, along with aging infrastructure, is putting considerable strain on extremely limited capital reserves. This includes critical systems reaching their end of life, including things like elevators, roofs, windows, the envelope of the building. And it is challenging to make improvements in areas of energy efficiency and accessibility and in-suit cooling when there is such an urgent need to address the critical systems with limited resources. As I mentioned before, we are currently reliant on COCHE funding to support providers with critical capital repairs. And the annual allocation has not been able to meet the demand. As an example, in 2024, we received 55 applications for critical repair needs with a need of about $15 million. We only received about $6 million through COCHE. And this has been a trend that we have seen over the life of the COCHE program. Next slide, please. So our priority area is a service system manager. The first is to support critical capital repair needs across the sector. It's important to not be reliant on annual provincial and federal allocations that have not yet been sufficient to meet needs and in order to maintain the current non-market housing stock. And this isn't just about increasing available funding, it's also about working with providers in a much more proactive and comprehensive way. And we heard several examples from providers and from other service managers across the province of how locally developed and more responsive capital repair program can significantly improve community housing stock. For increasing and improving tenant supports, most providers are small and don't have the capacity to take on this work. And this is an important area of leadership for us as service system manager. Both the Durham Region Local Housing Corporation and the Durham Region Nonprofit Housing Corporation have tenant support programs operating and we are looking to build on this work to support more providers. It is also important for us to coordinate and provide training opportunities for providers as well as being more proactive to intentionally coordinate community support services for both providers and for tenants. For implementing new service agreements or 7.1 agreements under the Housing Services Act, again, our goal is to make sure that providers are financially viable to maintain the current housing stock and to not risk losing any units. Ensuring mortgage savings are reinvested into the system so that our providers are able to complete critical capital repair work, undertake energy efficiency projects, et cetera. And lastly, expanding or increasing housing benefits and rent supplements across Durham. This is another tool that we have to increase affordability in Durham and particularly helpful to provide non-market housing in areas where community housing isn't currently available, as well as to stabilize households where they are already living. And we are actually now seeing more landlords and developers approach us to discuss rent supplement agreements, which is a marked shift from our historical experience in this portfolio and something that we are very happy to see. And it is just important to note that often rent supplements in the private market are more expensive just due to the nature of what those market rents are set at. Next slide, please. Okay, so that was a bit of context setting for the community housing portfolio. So I am now going to take you through an update of the development of our new At Home in Durham plan. The previous iteration of At Home in Durham was from 2014 to 2024. And we are in the process of developing our new 10-year housing and homelessness plan. Before I share a progress update, I thought it was important to provide a summary of activities that occurred during the previous plan. The first goal of the previous plan was to end homelessness in Durham. And important to note here, some notable achievements is that we had the creation of Durham's Coordinated Access System and By Name List over the life of the last plan, the creation of a regional street outreach program, the creation of the Durham Region Integrated Housing Homelessness System Plan, and increased shelter capacity in Durham by more than 95 shelter spaces. The second goal of the previous plan was affordable rent for everyone. Under this, we have the creation of the At Home Incentive Program, the creation of the Durham Portable Housing Benefit, and initiated around 903 new affordable units. To provide a little bit of extra detail on that, in the first five years of the plan, so from 2014 to 2019, 241 new units were developed. And then since the beginning of 2020 to 2024, an additional 596 units have been completed or are committed. The third goal was greater housing choice. Notably, we increased transitional housing by 100 units across Durham. 57 of those units are owned and operated by the region of Durham. We also had the creation of the Affordable Housing Development and Renewal Division, which is leading the work for DRLHC revitalization. And an important recent update to the DRLHC governance documents now allow for mixed income communities and the inclusion of affordable and market rate rentals to support the financing of redevelopment and to significantly increase the number of DRLHC units in Durham. The fourth goal of the plan was strong and vibrant neighborhoods. Under this, we increased community housing tenant supports, again, through the programs offered under the Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation, as well as Durham Region Nonprofit Housing Corporation. We have DRLHC energy retrofits and upgrades. These important projects are ongoing. And a new framework for community housing, which is those agreements that I spoke about previously. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the new plan is an update to the current At Home in Durham plan and aims to address the housing needs of all Durham residents, as well as provide an enhanced understanding of current and future housing needs of various populations in Durham region. We are working with SHS Consulting to develop this new plan. And work began in September 23 and included both public and council engagement to understand insights into the housing system in Durham. Engagements included a resident survey, as well as focus groups with key stakeholders. And we also recently completed engagement sessions with our municipal partners. Information from engagements were included in these study background reports that you see here. And these background reports help to inform the work that you will see throughout the remainder of this presentation. Next slide, please. The province is currently reviewing the Housing Services Act and the 10-year housing and homelessness plans. And as such, all service system managers are effectively on pause while we wait for an update to ensure that we are adhering to provincial requirements. However, we also know that this plan is an important tool to help drive work locally and are continuing to draft our plan in the next few months, which will come back to regional council for comment. Next slide, please. So from the background reports, the key housing insights were rolled up into the four main themes that you see here. You'll notice that these themes are not entirely different from the previous iteration of the plan. And I'll go through each key housing insight in more detail. Next slide, please. Thank you. The first housing insight was non-market housing for those in greatest need. There is a significant need for non-market housing in the region, particularly for families, seniors and single income households, as they face unique barriers to accessing and maintaining housing. Non-market housing includes deeply affordable housing, such as rent gear to income, and is the only housing type affordable to households in the lowest income deciles. Additionally, there is an acute demand for more shelter beds, transitional housing and supportive housing across Durham. And addressing these needs is crucial to ensure that those in greatest need have access to suitable and affordable housing options. The second insight was purpose-built rental housing and affordable ownership housing. While the last insight spoke to non-market housing, there is also a pressing need to increase the overall supply of purpose-built rental housing in Durham to accommodate the growing number of rental households. Additionally, there is a demand for affordable, adequate and suitable rental housing, particularly for one-person households, as well as programs to improve landlord and tenant relations. And for affordable ownership housing, there is a need for options that cater to moderate income households and large families across Durham. Third insight is to have diverse housing options and also to repair and improve existing stock. There is a need for a variety of housing options to accommodate different household compositions and ages, keeping pace with growth throughout Durham. Additionally, affordable and suitable housing is needed for large and multi-generational families and newcomer families, as well as diverse housing forms that support rental housing in rural communities. Furthermore, there is a need to rehabilitate and protect the existing housing stock, ensuring the availability of deeply affordable and rental housing across the region. The fourth insight was improved system and programs. So there is a need to align housing with physical and social infrastructure to create complete communities and to foster collaboration to create change within the current system, as well as increasing awareness of housing supports and programs that are available in communities across Durham. Additionally, increased funding and appropriate resources are necessary to address the scale and scope of affordable and scope of affordable housing and homelessness challenges. And there is also a need to improve transparency around the very lengthy dash waitlist and to support providers to mitigate challenges within the community housing sector, as I previously mentioned. So all of those key housing insights led to the creation of the four goals that you see here. Again, you'll notice that these goals are very similar to the last iteration of At Home in Durham, but they are very action-oriented and achievable. Each of these goals has potential strategies attached to it, which I'll go over on the next series of slides at a high level. So for strategies to address housing instability and homelessness, there is an urgent need to expand supportive housing, emergency shelters, and transitional housing across Durham, while also removing barriers for low-income households to access housing and supports. Additionally, coordinating services throughout the region and implementing the strategic priorities from the Durham Region Integrated Homelessness System Action Plan are essential to ensuring quality community responses for residents in need. For strategies to increase housing affordability across the continuum, encourage the creation of affordable and suitable rental units for both small households and large families, as well as affordable ownership housing options for singles and families across Durham. Through engagement, it has also recognized that collaboration with municipalities to coordinate and encourage incentives for affordable housing development is important to achieve this goal. For strategies to encourage and increase supply of housing options and a range of housing types, to promote the development of a diverse range of housing types and sizes to meet the needs of various household compositions, including young adults, older adults, and newcomer households, and to support the creation of purpose-built rental housing, protect and improve the existing deeply affordable housing stock, and to collaborate with all public agencies to provide surplus land for affordable housing development with a focus on creating complete and thriving communities. Lastly, strategies to create a more responsive housing and homelessness system includes the development of a transparent, efficient, and collaborative housing system that increases awareness of available supports and also aligns housing with social supports and a focus on community building. We also need to address barriers for priority populations, enable local partnerships, advocate for funding, and ensure comprehensive homelessness prevention programming to improve housing stability and promote long-term well-being for residents of Durham. To conclude, each of the goals and associated strategies presented on the previous, previous slides will also include objectives, actions, and, most importantly, key performance indicators to measure success. These indicators will help us track our progress and to make necessary adjustments to achieve our goals over the next 10-year plan. We anticipate presenting council with a draft of the new At Home in Durham plan later this year and look forward to your comment as we continue work to launch the next 10-year housing and homelessness plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some questions, Erin. First would be Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Erin, bless you for what you do, and my, my comments won't be a reflection on how hard that you work. My, my, my impression over the years is that this program, not Durham's program, Ontario's program, is desperately flawed, that Durham region, on the back of taxpayers, we cannot provide the resources needed to solve this problem, that the waiting lists, we've seen them get longer and longer and longer with no end in sight to them, to them getting shorter. Am I being overly pessimistic? And I do note you talk about this devolution, I thought was a wonderful title.
I mean, I think housing is a responsibility and needs collaboration from all three levels of government. I think when we look at the development of affordable housing and also non-market housing, it requires funding coordination from all levels of government. I think the transfer of responsibilities to the local level does provide for a more responsive system for the community housing sector in Durham, but I do think that it is a significant financial commitment that the region of Durham as service manager is providing.
That was very carefully said. Erin, AMO used to have numbers on the additional tax burden in Ontario. So as you'd pointed out, Ontario is the only province where social housing comes down to the municipalities. I haven't seen numbers updated for some, some period in time. Do we, do we have any sense of, of what Ontarians are paying in additional tax versus everywhere else in Canada?
That number I don't have in front of me, but we can get that to you. But I do know in terms of a service manager responsibility, our experience in Durham is similar to all other service managers across.
So, so I don't need the number, but it might be interesting to be put in the report because I think Ontarians need to know. Do we have statistics, given that Ontario is going it alone in this and has for quite some time, do we have statistics showing the success or lack thereof of the Ontario model versus everywhere else? So I recall a number of years ago at FCM, British Columbia was saying what a fantastic job they were doing. I, I read that that is perhaps overly optimistic, but is, but is anyone, is anyone comparing getting data to see what's working and what isn't working?
We can probably pull some of that data for you. It could be somewhat challenging to compare just because of population differences across provinces, as well as just the way different social programs are structured. I would say one of the other challenges that we see in the housing sector here in Durham is because the social assistance rates are low, even affordable housing. So if you look at CMHC's definition of affordable housing, which is around 80% of average market rent, in Durham typically a one-bedroom average market rent across our municipalities is around 1,400. So even at 80% of that, that's still, I believe, almost double what a single person on Ontario Works receives and about 80% of what a single person on Ontario Disability Support Program receives. So even the affordable housing is not affordable to folks who are living in the lowest-income deciles. So I think there's many different things that go into the housing system and different decisions that have been made, but we can try and pull some of that information for you.
Yeah, I think we're trying to go as, it is my belief, but I would need data to back it up, that, that the, the strategy in Ontario has not and cannot work. So a couple of quick questions. One, we, with, with the exception of a cut in GST, so I do not believe that the public purse can solve the problem, but if we can incent investments, we've had a reduction of the GST. You know, has Durham region ever, or AMO ever asked the province to please look at financial incentives to get money, private pension, whatever money, into solving this problem?
That I may turn over.
So you know what? Someone can pick up the phone and, and Nancy, you and I can have a chat on, on that. And you know I, I chew on this bone probably for a decade at this point in time.
Certainly. We can have an offline conversation.
I'll buy you a coffee. You'll have a Pepsi. I'll have a coffee. To a quick point, the community building, Erin, I think you're going to hear from the nonprofit as to how fantastic that pilot is. Thank you. Kudos on that, the supports, the, the social supports. Lastly, I, I think there are somewhere in the area of 94 providers in Durham region. You speak to many, being too small. Do we have an opinion as to whether there should be some amalgamations and even perhaps forced amalgamations to find some efficiencies?
In terms of amalgamations, those are certainly conversations that we will continue to support as we look to the new framework for community housing in Durham. And, but that is up to each, because providers are independently owned and operated, we can't force any amalgamations, but we do support those conversations. We know that there can be economies of scale when smaller providers come together. There has been some interest within the sector, so we are supporting those conversations wherever possible.
So I think we would have to look to upper levels of government forcing, but have there been any amalgamations? Human nature being what it is, I'm thinking that boards do not want to give up the control regardless sometimes of the benefits. Is, am I being fair or unfair with that one?
I mean, I can say that we, we haven't had any amalgamations yet, but I do think that is something that providers are starting to look at and consider, particularly, particularly when we look at the long-term financial viability of some of these small projects, that their rental revenue is always going to be challenging to meet the capital repair needs and the ongoing operating needs. So I do think some of those discussions are starting to happen now, but we have not had an amalgamation happen yet.
Thank you. So, so Erin, again, to you and your team, thank you for a Sisyphean task, you know, rolling that boulder up the, up the hill. Mr. Chair, thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Chair, and through you to Erin, I just want to thank you for an incredible presentation. The background information, the scope, the depth and breadth of the problems and challenges and also opportunities is quite staggering for one to get one's head around, and this one is one of the ones who's struggling to get his head around it. So I have a couple of questions for you. I wonder, the, the phrase "non-market" was used, and I imagine there are some people watching today as well as me looking for an answer. Would you kindly tell us what the definition of "non-market" means, please? I guess, first of all, I get asked a lot of these questions, and I don't always have as clear an answer as I would like, so this is my opportunity. And I would tell you that if you ever see me on here, I just sent you an email with, and Stella, with a request for information while I think of it. So would you, well, let's start with what is "non-market" housing, please?
Sure. The easiest way to think of "non-market" housing is, so when we talk about rent gear to income, that is "non-market" housing. Non-market housing also includes things like transitional housing and supportive housing, and that really, "non-market" housing is the only housing type that's affordable for people living within the lowest-income.
Great, thank you. So that's a good start. The next one I would like some clarity on is when you mentioned "community" housing, and would you kindly define what that is in your terms, please?
Sure. So community housing historically has been called "social" housing, if you've heard it called "social" housing. That terminology has changed to "community" housing. Those are nonprofit and cooperative housing providers who, their development occurred through financial agreements with the federal or provincial government. So most community housing providers in Durham fall under the Housing Services Act.
Well, we're on a roll here, so thank you. I'm taking notes as we go, so maybe I won't have to ask you this again. The next thing is, and this is really confusing for residents I deal with in Ward for Oshwa, there, as I understand it, there, and this is what I sent you the email about, there are not one, not two, but three different definitions of affordable housing. So when somebody says to me, okay, Rick, what, what's, what's affordable housing? I don't have the full answer. I can only maybe give one. So would you kindly, and you can do it later if it's too much to explain right now, but if you can, can you just clearly define what those three definitions, different definitions are, please?
Sure. I think the challenging part is that historically, the definition of "affordable" has rested on whatever funding program or stream existed at the time. So some of those programs include 80% of average market rent as a definition of affordable. We define affordable or deeply affordable as when somebody is paying no more than 30% of their income on rent, and that would include things like rent gear to income. There are other capital funding programs that have come out federally in the past that tie affordability to, I'm going to get the percentage wrong, but a percentage of median income for the area. So it does create a bit of a confusing patchwork, and I mentioned that the development of housing has been a patchwork of programs over many decades. We do still seem to be in that patchwork.
So is that 30% of median income? Was that one of the ones you mentioned?
I believe it was, I believe it was 30% of median income, but that resulted in rents that were not actually affordable.
Yeah. So you have, one is 8% of market rent, one is 30% of median income, and one is 30% of income, which results in rent gear to income subsidies?
Yeah, and there are others. It really, there is no standard definition of affordable housing. It really depends on which funding application.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. You also mentioned mixed income units and developments, which I fully support because I think it's great for people to mix and mingle. Can you give us an example of, of one that's under development or that has been developed that we can clearly get a visual on?
Sure. So in terms of the redevelopment of the DRLHC, I believe more information will be coming on that shortly. If you look at the At Home Incentive Program, the successful proponents, all of those include mixed income communities, so there is a percentage of those units that are affordable and then a percentage of those units that are full or market rent. Most community housing providers have mixed income communities. The DRLHC is actually the only provider that's 100% rent gear to income.
Thank you. And my last one, believe it or not, you mentioned a waitlist, and that's a tough one, too, for people to get their head around. What, what is the length in terms of number of people on the waitlist at this particular point in time?
So when we looked at the end of 2024, I don't have the exact number, but it was just under 11,000, and I believe that increased from just under 9,000 the year before.
11,000? How are we going to do this? I mean, you went over some, a spectrum of incentives and initiatives and so forth. So incentives for private developers, is that included in one of those initiatives to try and increase the stock?
Yes, so that's done through our At Home Incentive Program and also in consultations for the key housing insights and strategies. We recognize that coordination with our municipal partners is important in that area of work as well.
Thank you. I, our youngest is at home with us, and she has a very great fear that she's never going to be able to afford a place of her own, including apartments, and she's 37. So when you say you have opportunities to try and develop housing for individuals who are single and may never be a duo, it is quite a challenge, and there's a lot of people with, as a member of Counselor Chapman used this phrase once, cellar dwellers, where you have kids that come home and, it's tough. So thank you for the leeway, Mr. Chair, on that comment, but I really appreciate your responses today. I've taken notes, but I will look forward to getting that email just to give me something to lock onto. Thank you very much for all you do, Erin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Roy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Erin, as always, I could listen to you all day long and for all your work you do, thank you very much. I have a cellar dweller as well, too, and rent control is a big component of what we need to be looking at and addressing, and I know it's not part of the presentation, but what is the discussion of the, and I know it's not within our scope, but it is still part of the conversation? What have we been doing in terms of the rent control and lobbying for more action to give the supports for those who need affordable housing?
Sure. So in terms of rent control, and I may ask one of my colleagues in government relations, so I know that is something that has been talked about at like AMSA and ANFA, and rent control does exist for buildings built prior to 2018. It's buildings built that were after 2018 that are not included in that. The other challenge in terms of rent control is that all of that precludes unit turnover. So even a building built prior to 2018, when somebody moves out, oftentimes we see those rents that may have been affordable for many years, those rents changing. And I think a bit of it is a balance because costs are also increasing for landlords and even community housing providers when they're looking at setting their market rent, but I think that is an important piece of the puzzle that we need to continue pushing for.
Okay, and then the next is about two weeks ago, a number of mayors, we all participated with Durham Region Home Builders Association, and we were part of a panel to talk about housing, but I didn't hear in their narrative anything to ask the question about affordable housing. What are we doing to educate locally within our Durham Region Home Builders Association, but also with our realtors, because I've also presented to our realtors, and secondary units was a big part of their, their conversation? So are we doing anything and getting in front of the conversation and sharing? front of the conversation and sharing?
And I think you'll see that come out as one of the objectives under the strategies in the plan. We have seen a significant and marked shift in landlords and developers approaching us. Historically, we have had a challenge maintaining market rent supplement units, oftentimes because we, we set what we will pay up to and often try to negotiate to get those rents down. But we have seen several developers and landlords approach us in the last few months and want to enter into rent supplement agreements. So we're hoping to continue those conversations as well to expand that out across Durham.
Okay. And then lastly, and then just within the strategy, and it's one where yourself and both Gary have been a part of the conversation, but it's with the parents of the Durham intentionally built homes and that. And I just recently had similar conversation with community living. And it, it is that space and the finding of space for families who have young adults with disabilities who are independent, but still it's now accessing to, to some cases, it's a cellar dweller. Or it's also that you're actually transitioning part of your home to, to be a secondary unit to give that independent living. What are we doing further to help to facilitate that?
Sure. So I think in terms of work done to date, we have been able to provide portable housing benefits to support the affordability for folks to move out. I think there's still more work to do there. And I know that's something Gary and I have had conversations about. There's also, community housing providers are starting to get more interested in using land that they have to potentially expand. So we're also looking to make those kinds of partnerships wherever possible, so that units can be developed with specific needs in mind.
Yeah. And I think, just final, Mr. Chair, I think that the information of what the families are sharing with us is the strength of where we can get policy change, both federally and provincially. And I think that we should be advocating more so, including around the RDSPs, because my child can purchase a home with an RSP, but a, a young, not child, young adult, she can buy with her RSPs, but with your RDSP, you cannot apply that, which is really not fair.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment from, for Mayor Foster around the AMO position. It, their election campaign says that there's billions of dollars that are being diverted from municipalities to provincial responsibilities. And while I don't have the exact number, anything that starts with a B is too many.
Thank you. Thank you for the excellent presentation. That exhausts the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. So members of council, I'm going to make a suggestion that we take a 15-minute recess, allow staff to have an opportunity, and that we continue, but we make it a working lunch, so that we can hear all the delegations. So after the break, we'll come back. Now, the other part, for those online, because the council chambers are not full today, I will need to see your cameras on continually so that I know that we have quorum. And when we break for lunch, I'm going to ask that you go in twos, so that we don't lose quorum within the chambers. Counselor Chapman, could I get a motion for a 15-minute recess?
Sure.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Kerr. On a 15-minute recess, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we're in recess. To members of the audience, everyone will have an opportunity for five minutes to speak. Judge your time accordingly. Take the opportunity to go grab something to eat, or a cup of coffee, and come back. Washrooms are directly across the hallway. We're in recess. Anderson, take your seat, please. Counselor Wu? Counselor Wu? Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, members of council, we have 22, but I do know of a significant event that is happening in the city of Oshawa today. So I'm there again. I'm deeply concerned about quorum. For the delegations, when you come up, and their first delegation is Emma Cunningham, Durham District School Board Trustee, you'll have five minutes, and then questions. So, good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Emma Cunningham. I'm a Durham District School Board trustee. I'm not delegating on behalf of the board, but you'll notice in your correspondence section that the board did send a letter. And you'll also notice it's signed by the entire Board of Trustees, not just the chair. I want to tweak up my delegation a little bit from what I planned, and to share an example that happened to me of something that was awful but lawful. Just over a year ago, I came across a video of blood libel posted to a Durham Facebook group. And if you're not familiar with blood libel, it's probably the oldest antisemitic trope in history, and it's that Jewish people drink the blood of Christian babies. And this was a video by a fake rabbi confirming that blood libel is real. And this was shared in a Durham Facebook group. And the police said that because it wasn't shared with any commentary, they couldn't prove that the person who shared it was posting it for reasons of being antisemitic rather than being, sharing for education. I don't know anyone who would share content like that for education without some sort of a caption, but that's the sort of thing where the police couldn't take it any further, but it, I should have reported it to Bene Brith. So that would be my personal story of awful but lawful, an example of where something that is very clearly hate-related can slip through the cracks like that. But I want to share, back on topic, the profound emotional impact of encountering a Nazi swastika or other Nazi imagery. It feels like a punch to the stomach. It feels like the air is being sucked out of your lungs. Everything around you blurs into insignificance. It's called hijacking by scientists, and it's a psychological response that completely disrupts the ability to think or focus. And I want you to imagine trying to learn, teach, or just exist in a space where such symbols are visible. It creates a hostile environment. It strips away every sense of safety and belonging that every student, staff member, and Durham region, region resident deserves. I want to assure you, like this motion states, I strongly support banning Nazi swastika images specifically. I don't want to take away any symbols of peace and prosperity from the Hindu or other communities, and I'm happy to see that this motion calls out Nazi imagery specifically. Jew hate is on the rise. In Durham region, in 2024, hate crimes saw a 69% increase in religious hate crimes. 19 of these were against Jews, the majority of which involved a swastika. With only 3% of the population of Durham region being Jewish, 19 cases is not a small or insignificant number. And in fact, a recent study showed that 67% of Ontario's sixth-grade students who now have mandatory Holocaust education believe that the Holocaust could happen again. Seeing the region of Durham support this work through measures like requesting this ban from the federal government sends a powerful message to our Jewish families and beyond, that their safety, dignity, and humanity are priorities. Such steps contribute to, not only to the well-being of individuals, but also strengthen our community as a whole. So in closing, I, I urge you to support this motion and affirm your commitment to a community free from hate, where all students, staff, residents can thrive without fear. So thank you for your time and for taking this important stand against antisemitism and intolerance.
Okay. We have questions? The first question is Counselor Crawford.
Thank you. Thank you for your delegation. Your note here from this, the Board of Trustees, will the Durham District School Board also be having a motion come out through the board?
So the board did not have a motion. The board's motion was to write that letter. And that was an entire-
Are they taking a position?
It was a special board meeting designed to draft that letter. So that was our motion. What the board is also doing is we've created a working group. I'm fortunate enough to sit on it. And in three meetings, the amount of progress that we have made is astronomical.
Oh, good.
So we've made the decision to go the working group route, because we're able to make decisions a lot faster. There's a lot less bureaucracy slowing things down. So we're working more behind the scenes, but also sharing support with things like that letter for other motions that are coming forward. And it took us over an hour in meeting to get the letter that's in front of you today.
I used to be a trustee, I'm quite sure, quite aware of the length of time it takes to get anything done. Do you know if the Catholic Board has a position?
I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the delegate. Thank you, trustee, for coming in to speak with us today. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that you're a Pickering resident, so were you aware of an awful but lawful, I want to make sure I say that correct, incident that occurred on, in Pickering in War II on Canada Day last year, on our Sandy Beach Road Bridge, where a swastika was painted on the bridge, which would be the footpath that everyone attending our Canada Day celebrations would have seen?
I did hear about that, yes.
Those, what is your opinion about actions that, so the perpetuity could not be caught? So there's the awful bit. There's, there's no CCTV in a particular area. There's, there's no mechanism for the police to follow up in an incident of that nature. Do you have suggestions how we as a region, or we as, as the city of Pickering, could message or provide education to the community who may have been harmed by an incident of that nature? Or the community population as a whole, of this is what is occurring, and this is the resources you have available?
I can, although that means speaking to the motion I'm not officially delegating on. But a few things that can be done there is, one, there can be support made available to anyone who is traumatized by a Nazi swastika, which is not exclusively Jews, right? A lot of other people died in the Holocaust who may find that symbol traumatic. Not sweeping it under the rug, so coming forward immediately, making it public that such a thing has happened. When I only hear about incidents like that through the Jewish community, and I don't hear non-Jews speaking up about it, that is also quite traumatic. So hearing allies come up, speak out, use their voice, use the media to talk about how unacceptable that is, is, sends a really powerful message. And as the other motion states, reporting something like that to Bene Brith, and unfortunately, I did not report my awful but lawful incident to them, and I wish I did, but reporting to them so that they are able to keep track of things like these in their reports, because then those reports are used to lobby the government for further security. So making sure that they do have that data helps them do their job and helps keep us all safe.
Wonderful. Excellent points. The statistical capture of these incidents is important for all municipalities to register. I thank you for your delegation. Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you. Counselor Pickles?
Thank you, Chair. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, Emma, for your delegation today. Always nice to see and hear from you. Our CAO, when asked the question, where would this motion go if, if it's approved, and I, I plan to support it, and she spoke of a protocol. So I'm sure you, as, as a delegate, and the other delegates, would have some very helpful pointers or suggestions. Would you be willing to provide those suggestions if there were an opportunity in the process with, with regional staff to help input to such a protocol? Because I don't think we should be drafting one on the floor here today. But whatever the process is we use, do you think yourself and other delegates would be willing to bring their suggestions and expertise and experiences to the table to assist the region in looking at and drafting a protocol?
I can only speak for myself and say that I would be more than happy to help out, and I would be surprised if other delegates today, at least some of them, don't say the same. But I would be more than happy to help in any way I can.
Okay. Well, I, I think that would be a very good idea. And the, and the reason I, I phrase my question that way in speaking to other delegates is the chair probably would rather I not ask the same question of every delegate here today. So I, I, like you, expect that some would be willing to participate in that process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Lee? Counselor Lee, we cannot hear you again. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for, for coming to speak to us. And, and I think as everybody said, you know, the, the spirit of this is, is supported. Did, did either yourself or any other members of the board receive any kind of legal advice or opinion regarding such a possible ban?
We didn't specifically receive legal advice. However, our lawyer was in the room and available to make any red flags if needed.
So, I'm sorry, nobody, nobody in the room asked him, hey, how would this possibly work itself into law? And would this survive a charter challenge? Nobody asked the, your legal individual that?
Not specifically, no.
Okay. Once again, you know, I, I fully support the, the idea of this. I just, I really wonder where it's going to be going. But thank you very much for, for coming in and, and giving us that, you know, that personal reflection on how it has impacted you and others. Thank you.
Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank goodness. Thank you, Emma, for your present, presentation. Obviously, you know, your, your lived experience is really good value to, for perspective, for this council. I do want to ask, though, so currently, the painting of a swastika or any sort of Nazi iconography, that is already a hate crime. Is, am I, am I incorrect in stating that?
You are and you aren't. So hate, hate crimes, most of the ones in Durham, and I would say probably most of the ones at large do involve swastikas. However, like the story of lawful but awful that I gave earlier, there needs to be some context placed around them to make it a hate crime. So it's also not legal to spout myths about blood libel. But you have to prove the intent behind sharing it. So you can have a swastika in a history book, and that's not illegal. And you should have swastikas in history books. You can have them in novels.
Right.
You know, I watched The Sound of Music, and the Nazi flag dropped right above my head, and that's not illegal. So context is really what is important here. And usually, if you see something like graffiti, it's usually antisemitic, although I would say probably a lot of the time, it's just, you know, children trying to do something to feel tough. But you have to have some reason to believe, a provable reason to believe that it's being shared for reasons of antisemitism.
So through this motion, which is encouraging the federal government to just ban all, you know, this, because you're here for the, the swastika, so by banning the swastika, it would incense, anytime it is used in a non-educational way, is that the best way to kind of frame this? Like, you know, showing, showing Schindler's List would not be, you know, would not, this would not fall under that, right? This is just specifically painting the swastika for the intent of intimidating or creating emotional harm, is the intent behind this, correct?
That would be my read.
Or punishing that?
That would be my read on the motion. Yes.
Okay, no, I just needed that clarification. I really appreciate that. And I think other members of council also appreciate that. So again, thank you for sharing your experience.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Emma, for coming forward and this very important matter. And ironically, the same day the occurrences occurred in Whitby, at the sports field, a similar incident occurred in Clarendon as well. It was anti-black racism on a new, we have a brand-new field, and it was all over there. I think that was in Newcastle. So, so I understand the need for this. The problem is, I support the motion entirely, but logistically, how is it going to be implemented? There's certain nuances that we have to get around. But I guess I leave it to our staff, maybe the-
It has to be a question.
So, yeah, I don't really have a question, per se. I'm just, so again, thank you for sharing your experiences and coming forward. Well, maybe, how, logistically, how will you think we should approach implementing the motion?
I think Counselor Pickle's idea to consult with the Jewish community when writing out that protocol would be incredibly valuable. And of course, involving a- that protocol would be incredibly valuable. And of course, involving a legal team to make sure that anything that happens is, is consistent with, with Canadian law would be important. And ultimately, the motion that I'm delegating to involves essentially lobbying the federal government. So ultimately, it would be up to them to craft the, the ban in the, the best way possible to ensure that the Hindu community is not impacted, history lessons are not impacted. I would be sad to lose the Sound of Music as a musical theater buff. So being able to parse out those nuances would definitely be important. And I'm frankly glad that it's not my job to have to do that.
Okay. One follow-up question. You think that we should, while we're doing that, we should cover all instances of hate?
I think that absolutely, all instances of hate. And I know, I believe Whitby was talking about putting out a second motion, another date, to address other symptoms of hate. The one thing I will say is that I can't remember a time before these motions where antisemitism was mentioned without any other ism involved, usually Islamophobia, but it could be any other ism. The Jewish community is almost never given a second for it to just be about us. And to see motions like this come forward that actually give us space and center us for this couple of hours or however long we're here today is hugely impactful. And so I would love to see more motions come forward to talk about other views of hate, you know? This is one that impacts me, but it's not my only identity. There are certainly other things that would impact me, impact my family, impact my friends, impact my community. I would love to see more come, but I also really appreciate seeing us just given a moment.
Right, Lisa. Thank you.
Counselor Wu?
Yeah, through the Chair, and again, Emma, you and in fact, just answered the, answered Counselor Anderson. I was going to ask you that particular question. But just go a little further in our little opportunity to speak. Being a trustee of Durham District School Board, and again, you did make reference to the email that was sent by Gillian Venning. But within, again, the board policy on that, they talk about, and you mentioned Islamophobia, you know, homophobia, but there isn't really not a space there that really deals with antisemitism. Can you speak to that?
I think we're just a really small group. And when we're only 0.3% of the population here, it's easy to slide under the radar. You know, I'm very involved here. I spend a lot of time at Chabad. You'll hear from my rabbi later. We are a very vibrant group. And yet, I would say the majority of people in Durham Region probably don't know anyone who's Jewish. And when it's not in front of you, and it's not something you're surrounded by, when it's not something that comes across you in your daily life, it's, it's easier to miss. And we're just, I think we're 0.2% of the people in the world. We're tiny. And people forget how tiny a group we really are.
Well, I would say in my career, which is vast, some of the ones that left an impactful, in fact, worked for him, Isidore Sharp, if you know him. So I would just say, you know, you might be, consider yourself small, but you leave a lasting impression, and certainly that did with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Emma, for your presentation and 100% fully support the motion in terms of banning the symbol in terms of hate crime. But I do have a, a question in terms of your read of the motion, and it, and particularly as a school board trustee. It specifically says, and my read is, is to pass legislation banning public display of Nazi symbols. And I would include, it doesn't speak to the educational or historical nature of that. So your Sound of Nature example, or Sound of Music example would be, or in a classroom, et cetera, would be included in that, I fully expect. That would all be captured within this motion and not be able to be displayed. Again, stating that I don't support it in any form of, of hate crime, obviously. But that's not how this motion reads. And I would fully expect that if this motion was to go through, that the school board would then be responsible to stop having that displayed in their textbooks, to block Wikipedia from being able to look it up, et cetera, et cetera. Has the school board considered that as, or did the trustees in the working group consider that?
That wasn't our read in the motion. I hear your concern. And if that's your read on the motion, I would love it for you to bring forward amendments to word it in a way that you feel would eliminate those problems.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That exhausts the list of questions. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Next delegation is Richard Robinson, Director of Research and Advocacy of Benabreth, Canada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I'm registered to delegate on both items 8.1 and 8.2. Is there any particular order in which you would like me to do so?
Take your first five minutes for the first one. We'll do the second one at the same time. Just...
So I'll begin with item 8.1 then. Thank you, Chair Henry, and members of Regional Council. My name is Richard Robertson. I'm Benabreth Canada's Director of Research and Advocacy. Benabreth is Canada's most senior human rights organization, having been founded in 1875. Our mandate is to combat racism and hatred in all its forms and to champion the rights of the marginalized. We are the voice of Canada's grassroots Jewish community. I'm here this morning to discuss Agenda Item 8.1, Combating Antisemitism in Protocol for Reporting Non-Criminal Acts of Hate. Benabreth Canada has the opportunity to review the motion and endorses the recommendation. The statistics do not lie. Hate is on the rise in this country. According to statistics, Canada, from 2022 to 2023, the number of hate crimes in Canada rose by over 32%. The number of antisemitic incidents has been increasing at an alarming rate. In 2023, the number of antisemitic incidents recorded by Benabreth Canada's annual audit of antisemitic incidents rose by over 100% compared to the year prior. Preliminary assessments for 2024 indicate that the situation has only continued to devolve. To properly combat the rise in hate, we must first be able to properly document it. Police forces across the country, including the DRPS, do an excellent job of classifying, recording, and reporting the occurrences of hate. However, what is classified as a hate crime or a hate motivated offense in Canada does not encapsulate all incidents of hate faced by Canadians on a regular basis. In fact, some of the most grotesque incidents of hate fall into the unfortunate category of awful but lawful. These incidents, even though they are just as relevant to the rise in hate as incidents that meet the formal classification for hate crimes or hate motivated offenses, are not recorded by the police. It is up to organizations like Benabreth Canada to identify, triage, record, and report these incidents. The burden that is placed on community groups like Benabreth Canada is immense. Canadians are relying on our efforts to ensure that our annual reports accurately identify the state of hate in Canada. We are pleased that the Town of Whitby unanimously passed a similar motion last week. To go one step further, we believe that support from Regional Council will serve to ameliorate our efforts to ensure that our annual audit and documents like it are as comprehensive and accurate as possible. As a key stakeholder in the community, the region is uniquely situated to serve as an extra conduit for documenting and reporting awful but lawful incidents. Members of Council and regional staff are the boots on the ground in their respective communities and are best positioned to ensure that when hate occurs in their jurisdiction, it is properly documented. Durham Region has an opportunity to be a national leader in the fight against hate. By developing a protocol or policy like the one envisioned in Item 8.1, Durham Region will be directly aiding organizations like Benabreth Canada in ensuring that their statistics are as accurate and as all encompassing as possible. The proposed protocol or policy would have the propensity to set a national standard. Benabreth Canada presently employs several reporting mechanisms that could be utilized by the municipality in actuation of the protocol or the policy. We utilize a web-based reporting form, a smartphone app, and a telephone hotline. At present, we rely on the public and our own monitoring capabilities to remain informed of antisemitic incidents as they occur. If the region were to enact the proposed protocol or policy, it would streamline the reporting of incidents occurring within the jurisdiction and would expedite the enhancement of our ability to respond. Thus, Durham Region would be enhancing the ability of organizations like Benabreth Canada to respond to the victims of hate incidents occurring within the region. It would be an honor and a privilege for our organization to work in concert with the region to fight against racism and hatred. And I just want to clarify that the expertise would be handled by the organizations who have learned and demonstrated expertise in triaging and assessing various incidents of hate. At Benabreth Canada, we use the federal and provincial definition of antisemitism, the IRA definition of antisemitism. So no expertise would be required on the part of the region or of its staff. Simply, we are asking that you, as the eyes and ears, the leaders within your region, help us to further understand the state of hate by reporting it to us and allowing us to do our job, which is to triage, identify, report, and respond to incidents of hate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We have questions. First is Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Richard, for the delegation. First, just want to extend condolences. I believe Michael Moyston had just passed last week. He was the CEO for many years with the organization. Good, yeah, I had spoken to him many times, so just, I just want to extend condolences. My question regarding the, what if there are instances where your view, because again, this, this reporting is actually open to all instances of hate, as it should be. But what happens if, like, you have a different definition of hate motivated incident than another organization, and then the two conflict? What would happen in that case? What would the expectation be in that case?
Well, we use the federal and provincial definition of antisemitism, the IRA definition of antisemitism. Therefore, I believe that since we're using the federal and provincial definition, that really there will be no major debate as to whether or not something that is classified in our audit of antisemitic incidents is considered an antisemitic incident. Our audit of antisemitic incidents is considered the benchmark in Canada for identifying antisemitic incidents as they occur. Can't speak to other forms of hate, as I'm not an expert on those. But when it comes to antisemitism, we're using the federal and provincially adopted definition. So really, this is quite standardized, and our audit is accepted around the world and across the country, used by law enforcement at all levels of government and by key academic stakeholders as the, the benchmark piece for identifying antisemitism in Canada. So really, there shouldn't be much of a debate.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, those, those are my questions. I think that's ultimately my biggest concern for this is the nuance required. And so ultimately, you would, you, in your vision of this, it would defer to the Ontario Human Rights Code as well as the federal definitions of various forms of hate, correct?
Yes. When anyone sends an incident or reports an incident or a suspected incident of hate to Benabreth Canada, whether it's the Durham Region or it is Jane or John Doe on the street, we use the federal and provincial definition of antisemitism to assess whether or not we will triage what is reported to us as an incident for use in our audit of antisemitic incidents.
Okay, thank you for the, for the answer.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and, and through you. Thank you very much for, for coming out and speaking to this. All of us agree that, that hate is definitely on the rise, and it certainly has some identifiable origins or, you know, things that are pumping it along and making it more normal in our society, which is, which is unacceptable. Are you, are you aware, back in 2021, I guess it was, there was a private members' bill in Parliament that, it was an act to amend the Criminal Code banning symbols of hate. Are you aware of that, that bill back in the day, C313, I think it was?
Yes, I am aware of the, of the bill from 2021. I also have, not for clarification, delegated yet on Agenda Item 8.2, and I will be providing additional information from the, the neighbors' position on what is actually our call for a federal ban to, a federal ban of the public display of the swastika with certain exemptions. So I haven't yet delegated on that, but yes, I am aware of that. We believe, however, that now is the time for Canada to revisit this in the face of the increasing frequency with which we are seeing the swastika and other Nazi iconography utilized in the public space in Canada, as well as it will bring us in line with the 18 countries around the world, including many allies of the Canadian nation who have adopted similar bans.
Okay, sorry, I guess I spoke out of turn there. I'll wait till you delegate on that item. Thank you.
Counselor Lee?
Thank you. Through the Chair, to Richard, thank you so much for coming up to, to Whitby today. So can you, I guess my first question is, if a person, again, you're talking about the difference between crime and hate motivated crime, and the differences between awful and lawful, and I think that's where things are a little fuzzy for some folks. So for an example, when you speak in your delegation about awful but lawful, like if some, if a person paints a Nazi swastika on, like a non-Jewish person her home, is that considered a hate crime? Is that covered under Section 319?
So that would be considered an act of mischief. That wouldn't be considered a hate crime under Section 319 in the Criminal Code. Under Section 319 in the Criminal Code, right now, three provisions, or there are three different sub-provisions. One is for the promotion of hate. The other is for the instigating of hate. That's part one. Part two is the willful promotion of hate. And then part 2.1 is the willful promotion of antisemitism. But that clause is incredibly narrow, as it only covers Holocaust distortion, denialism, and diminishment. So there are lots of crimes that occur that because of the nuances of the criminal act do not fall under either Section 318 or 319. 318 is our advocating genocide provisions of our Criminal Code for the record, so they don't fall under either Section 318 or 319 of the Criminal Code. And beyond that, there's many instances of hate that occur, not just against the Jewish community, but against many communities that aren't considered to be criminal in nature. So they don't fall under any provision of the Criminal Code as either a hate crime proper or as a hate motivated offense. So we have a tremendous relationship with police departments around the country. Every single year, as we're compiling our audit, we reach out, we're actually in the process of doing this now for last year's records, and we receive the statistics. We receive them from Durham Region. For this year, we receive them from Durham Region. Every year, the DRPS does a great job. And that allows us to properly monitor the amount of hate motivated crimes and actual hate crimes occurring in a given jurisdiction. Where we're asking for help and where we believe that we, in concert with the region, can do better is in ensuring that the relevant organizations are made aware of hate incidents.
No, and that's very helpful, because that's the point of what we're turning to, just focusing on the region, regional property, putting in that particular protocol. And then, can you explain further, you touched on the federal and provincial definitions of antisemitic hate. So if that's clear, and that's adopted provincially and federally, is, so that, so that should be the universal standard that we should all be using if it's already provincially and federally adopted?
Yes. At Benabreth Canada, we consider the IRA definition to be the, the definition that should be utilized in Canada when assessing antisemitism, because it's been adopted by the federal government. It is the definition of antisemitism under the federal government's anti-racism strategy. It has been adopted by the Government of Ontario, and it's the definition of antisemitism utilized in the provincial anti-racism strategy and initiative. And it's also been adopted by the, by now a majority of Canadian provinces.
And just really briefly, just so for my awareness, can you say, highlight what that definition is, just on a really high level?
Yes. So the IRA definition is a working definition of antisemitism. What actually is material to the IRA definition of antisemitism is the 11 examples contained within the definition itself. And the 11 examples are intended to be used as a guide to help identify antisemitism. They range from every, they, they cover everything from traditional blood libel to blaming Jewish individuals for the policies of the State of Israel to Holocaust denial, diminishment, and distortion. It's been, it's a definition of antisemitism that is constantly reviewed at a yearly plenary and has been developed by experts from 36 member countries around the world to best encapsulate the hate that is affecting contemporary Jewry.
Okay, so if I try and reconcile all the pieces that you're saying together, so here's a question. So is your understanding that someone paints a swastika on the home of a person who is not Jewish, would a police organization count or categorize that as a hate motivated crime in their annual statistics, or would it only be categorized as vandalism or mischief and not be captured, highlighting the reason why we need to do this type of protocol?
So, and the specific example I believe that you're referring to happened recently in Kelowna, in the RCMP in Kelowna in British Columbia elected not to, to make it a hate crime. I don't want to do on the act of saying that this would always be the case.
Understood.
In that, in that specific example, it's an excellent analogy, because yes, that would have been classified and was classified as a crime of mischief under 5,000 by the police. We would not have received that when we reached out to the RCMP in Kelowna for their annual, for our annual audit and asked them for their figures on antisemitic hate crimes or hate motivated occurrences. So we would not be receiving that figure from them. Yet, it's integral that we have that in our audit. It's important that every time a swastika is used maliciously in this country, that we have been able we at Bene Brith know about it and our fight against Holocaust distortion, denialism, diminishment, and against antisemitism.
So, so that's a great example of why the report of the protocol region would be helpful if it was on regional property. That is that gap between, I think you mentioned at one point around 900 or so that were captured in police reports, but there was like 5,000 or so that were not. And this is the protocol that we're looking at here today in other municipalities. It will help us close that gap. Is that a fair understanding of what you're asking?
Absolutely. In the fight against antisemitism, as we continue to see rising levels of antisemitism and rising levels of hate in general in this country, the more eyes, the more ears, the better. And we're open to any assistance. We're working to providing whatever expertise, learned expertise we can in the drafting of a protocol or a policy. But yes, in general, the more the merrier when it comes to the fight against hate.
No, and I thank you for that clarity, because that's what's really important, because you have questions in this chamber, that's because we're all not experts in this area, so clearly you are. Thank you so much for coming up this evening, and I appreciate your support for the motion on the floor.
My pleasure.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Chair Henry. To the delegate, thank you for your presentation. Richard, you clearly are an expert, so I thank you for your detailed responses. Staying on what Counselor Leahy was discussing about closing the gaps, and you touched on the Criminal Code 318 and 313. Could you explain to me, because I think this is relevant for what these motions are trying to accomplish, and I'm not quite clear. We have seen a rise in antisemitic hate groups that are formalizing now. An example I would give you is the Thunderbird National Party and their rally that they held August 30th in Ottawa at Confederation Park. How does the Criminal Code address instances, as Counselor Leahy referred to, you know, how do we protect region spaces, public places, from gathering without violating the right for groups to gather and meet? But a group such as the Thunderbird National Party, who is quite clearly antisemitic to the point that they wear swastikas on their shirts as their uniform, how do we, as the region and as individual municipalities, understand the provisions within the Criminal Code to close those gaps and close those loopholes that may exist that we can help you and combat this?
Certainly. So when groups, we'll call them hate gangs for clarity's sake, or espousing rhetoric that could be seen as advocating genocide, that would fall under Section 318 of the Criminal Code. If they're inciting hatred in the public space, that would fall under Section 319. If they're willfully promoting hatred, that would fall under 319. If they're a white ethno-nationalist neo-Nazi style group and they're diminishing, distorting the Holocaust, that would also fall under 319 2.1. As a region, what Durham can do is it can advocate for more robust enforcement of the hate crime provisions of the Criminal Code. These specific provisions under Section 319 and 318 require Attorney General's consent. So there is oftentimes some gaps in their usage and their, in the enforcement, the laying of these charges. So I think it's critical that if Durham Region wants to confront that, that that's one way in which they can do it. The other thing is that some of these more radical, especially the neo-Nazi accelerationist type groups, have been listed under the Criminal Code as terrorist organizations. One of them is the Atomov, and that's an excellent example of that. I know of the Thunderbird, the Thunderbird Movement, unfortunately, they're not listed. But I will, I'd like to turn this back to this motion that's before counsel now. When we learn of incidents of hate, like the vandalism, I have an excellent team, blessed to have an amazing team of researchers and data analysts, whose sole job is to investigate these occurrences. And oftentimes, we're able to tie back that graffiti or link it to a hate group. And when we link that to the hate group, it enhances our ability to advocate for investigations against these groups. If necessary, it helps us to advocate for their listing as terrorist organizations under the Criminal Code. So one of the ways that you can help is by ensuring that when hate occurs, it's reported to the proper community organization, because we do a lot with a little bit. So when we have one incident of hate, it might be the, you know, the straw that breaks the camel's back in an entire investigation.
I appreciate that response. Thank you for that. I'm sure I'll have additional questions as we go on. Thank you for your time and for delegating today.
My pleasure.
Mayor Schumer.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Getting a little difficult to follow which of these motions we're talking about here, but I am going to save the items I was speaking to earlier. I'll save those for your next delegation. But with respect to this reporting, can you clarify what would be reported?
So I referenced in my delegation Bene Brith's reporting mechanisms. Bene Brith's reporting mechanisms do not require the betrayal of a perpetrator's identity. All that we need is to know the location of an antisemitic incident. Let's say it's graffiti, the date in which it occurred, and ideally, a photo of the graffiti. That's all we need to record in our annual audit of antisemitic incidents. If something is occurring online, then a screenshot or a link to the offending post, the date on which it occurred, that's all we need.
Okay, but these are only going to be on regional property, so I'm not sure where the reporting of online would fall into a regional reporting.
Theoretically, if something happened on a post made by Durham Region on social media or something like that, and even if that's outside the scope of this motion, that's fine. We can take incremental steps here. I'm just envisioning that that might be something that Durham Region would want to commit to reporting to the various organizations that combat hate.
Okay. And what if, what if somebody was in a park or walking down a regional road, regional property for sure, and it wasn't, it wasn't painted, it wasn't, you know, hard copy of anything, it was, it was a racial slur? What happens with that as far as reporting?
Yes, so we encounter these incidents all the time. Oftentimes, it's the victim of the incident, but sometimes, it's a witness to the incident. They inform Bene Brith Canada using one of our reporting mechanisms, and we record that in the annual audit of antisemitic incident after doing our due diligence to ensure that the event did actually transpire as it's, as it's presented to us. So all we would need in that instance is to know, you know, hey, I received a report from a constituent of mine that while they were walking their dog in Jane Doe Park on Saturday, we would need the date, the location, XYZ Park, that they were called a, I'll use a terrible Jewish slur, a kike. We would then put that into our, into our audit of antisemitic incidents as an event happening theoretically in Clarington, in XYZ Park, on Saturday, whatever date of whatever month of whatever year.
Okay, thanks. All I'm trying to do is determine, you know, like, because a lot of things can be said to a lot of people, maybe even the heat of a moment of an argument that could be over anything, right? A dog urinating or defecating on the, on the ground, and somebody, somebody says something or somebody interprets it the wrong way. I'm getting to that, Mr. Chair. So I'm just a little curious, and how would you handle the possibility that this was a report out of spite? Because you're really just going by somebody's word, right? You're just going by somebody saying, hey, somebody or whoever in Jane Doe Park called me a whatever. We're really just going on that person's word then, correct?
So in that instance, we would be. We do do, as I explained, our due diligence to ensure that, that the incidents, as they're reported to us, have in fact taken place. We always encourage recordings to be, to be provided to us, photographic evidence to be provided to us, witness testimony to be provided to us if that content is available. But we're not, we're not law enforcement. It's not up to Bene Brith Canada and other agencies that combat hate to determine what is and what is not criminal. However, I would like to think that there are ways for community members to express themselves in the heat of a moment in that type of a situation, other than to use racial, antisemitic, Islamophobic, homophobic slurs. So that information should be recorded, because that is unacceptable conduct, at least in my submission, Mayor, that is unbecoming of citizens of Durham Region.
And I fully agree with you on that. I mean, you know, there's no, there's no excuse, right? Even though, you know, people can use an excuse, there is really no excuse. My concern then is, and you mentioned, you know, somebody takes a snapshot, a photo, maybe it's not video, they take a snapshot of this person, you know, pointing their finger at him and saying, hey, this person called me a whatever. That then is flowing through the region and being reported to you. And that's where kind of some of my concern is here. What is the region being expected, or what are members of council even being expected to be filtering through as part of this reporting? You know, because I really start worrying then about images taken of somebody on regional property, and, and then somebody is saying, look, trust me, this person called me a whatever. And then, you know, so we're in, we're in this process, where we're forwarding these, these pictures to you, maybe not a name, but a, you know, a picture, picture can be dangerous. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, is that what you're expecting then possibly, that the region would do is forward that information, including possibly a picture?
An image of an offender would certainly not be required for, for an incident to be included within our audit of antisemitic incidents. I would leave it up to the region's legal team, Chief Administrative Officer and others to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to send images that are sent to the, to the region to an organization such as mine. What I can tell you is that my organization does not betray the privacy of those who report incidents to us, and I can tell you that every single incident that is recorded in our audit goes through a double-blind examination, and that I have a tremendous team who do their due diligence to make sure that there are no inaccuracies in what is reported to us.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that exhausts the questions. Would you please continue with your next delegation, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also here this morning to discuss, I think it's actually afternoon now, Item 8.2, Protecting Canadian Values, ban on the Nazi swastika in Canada. Bene Brith Canada is in full support of the proposed motion. We thank Counselor Leahy and Counselor Yamada for their efforts to bring this motion before council and congratulate Durham Region for the leadership it has shown in the fight against hate and antisemitism by even considering such a motion. Bene Brith Canada calls for a national ban on the public display of the Nazi swastika and the public display of Nazi symbols and iconography, with certain exceptions, those exceptions being for historical and artistic purposes. The impetus behind this call is the alarming rise in the frequency with which Bene Brith Canada has been witnessing the public display of the Nazi swastika and other Nazi symbols. It is unacceptable that we are only 80 years removed from the liberation of Auschwitz, and yet, in Canada, in 2024, Nazi flags were flown in front of and in the windows of residential properties. Nazi swastikas were regularly featured in graffiti, and Nazi iconography was co-opted by protesters on both sides of the political spectrum. The Nazi swastika and other symbols of the Nazis, such as the Toppenkoff and the SS runes, are uniquely positioned as iconographic symbols, as they have only ever been synonymous with diabolical evil and hatred. They are an affront to humanity. Their display and usage, subject to certain limited exceptions, only serve to promote hate and pay homage to a grotesque and undemocratic ideology. Yet, despite its horrific history, the public display of the Nazi swastika remains legal in Canada. There is no right or freedom that exists in our democratic society that justifies the public display of such repugnant iconography. The symbols of the Nazi regime serve no utility or purpose. A ban on their public display is certainly something that our organization believes would fall under the guise of a reasonable limitation of, under the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. The ban called for by Bene Brith Canada, which this motion seeks to endorse, serves only an ameliorative function to Canadian society. The increased frequency of the display of the Nazi swastika and other Nazi iconography in Canada is not merely an issue for the Jewish community. It is an insult to all, the existence of the Nazi swastika in the public sphere in Canada is an insult to all the victims of Nazi persecution and all those who sacrificed their lives to liberate the world from Nazi tyranny. And I note that as I walked into this council chamber, I walked past the memorial of the Canadians who died in Durham Region fighting against the Third Reich. Bene Brith Canada's petition in support of our call has been signed by over 10,000 Canadians. I would be remiss if I did not address the other uses of the swastika throughout history. The swastika was corrupted by the Third Reich. It is important to recognize that the swastika in its original form is a sacred symbol of Jainism, Hinduism, and other cultures, and is integral to these faiths and to the ethnoculture of their adherents. The misappropriated use of the swastika through the establishment by the Third Reich of the Hafenkreuz has harmed these respective communities, banning the Nazi swastika, the Hafenkreuz, not the Hindu or the Jain or the Buddhist swastika. Will further protect the sacred symbols of those religions from undue condemnation. Further, it will serve as an opportunity to educate Canadians on the difference between what is sacred and what is a symbol of abhorrent evil, whose history is intrinsically linked to hate. Such a ban is not a novel concept. If enacted, Canada will be joining 18 countries who have already banned the public display of symbols like the Nazi swastika linked to the Third Reich. Bene Brith Canada looks forward to Durham Region joining the town of Whitby, as well as the other nations around the world and other jurisdictions who continue to give substance to the concept of never again, through the endorsement of a ban on the, the endorsement of a national ban on the Nazi swastika. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We do have questions. Mayor Schumer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you again for speaking to this, because, you know, I can only imagine putting myself in situations that you speak to. And, and thank you very much as well for bringing up the, I guess, the history of the swastika, because quite frankly, before this, you know, I had not realized that there were so many religions, peace-loving religions and others that did utilize it. So it's, it's striking. A lot of us, of course, only associated with, with the Nazi movement so many decades ago. I spoke to you earlier about, there was an attempt back in, I think, 2020 or 2021, to bring in legislation in Parliament exactly to this, Bill C 313, and it only received one reading. I could not find for the life of me what happened to that. You are familiar with it. Can you enlighten us as to what happened to that bill after it received the first reading?
I am familiar with MP Julian, I believe it was. MP Julian's bill before the House of Commons in 2021. All I know is that it did not pass beyond first reading. The nuances as to why, I am not, I am not sure. What I do know is that we feel confident in bringing this forward. Bene Brith is advancing our call as a grassroots call to action. That is why we came to the municipalities first. That's why we will be continuing to connect with municipalities across the country, because we believe that the federal government needs to know that Canadians across the country do not feel comfortable with the public display of the swastika in their, in their communities. This is going to, we hope that this will be a community effort, in a community-led effort, and that's why we've come to the municipalities first. 18 other jurisdictions have, have brought this forward and have passed similar legislation. So we do believe what happened in 2021 with that, with that bill before, in the House of Commons aside, that now is the time to re-explore this. It's the time, because we're seeing a rise in its usage, it's the time, because we believe that this is what Canadians from coast to coast want, and that it's a way for Canadians from coast to coast to reaffirm their values as Canadians, and because we believe that, that we want to join as a world leader in the fight for human rights, the 18 other countries who have said no to the Hafenkreuz.
Thank you. And one of my, one of my colleagues did bring up that, you know, the motion before us doesn't speak to nuances, it just speaks to an outright ban. And I believe it was you that mentioned, you know, then perhaps some amendments need to be made to it, and I think that is the case, because, you know, in the short period of time that we've been hearing from delegates, there's been a number of obvious exemptions that should apply. Do you, do you have something for us as far as, you know, those exemptions? Because I can only imagine in some of those countries you've mentioned, there are exemptions added to, you know, this, this ban of the swastika.
Certainly, and Bene Brith's call to action is based on best practices, taking the examples and the precedent set in those countries. If I'm not mistaken, though, the motion before council is to adopt Bene Brith Canada's call. And Bene Brith Canada's call does contain the language of "with exemptions for historical and artistic purposes." The nuances of that, I would leave to the federal government to determine, but those, that language is contained within the call to action which the motion is endorsing. So whether or not it's in the motion proper, I believe the motion does cover that.
Okay, fair enough. And I mean, I asked this of the, the last delegate, but obviously, you know, well, there was, there was the... but uh obviously, you know, well, there there was uh, there was the availability of them to consult. So, I mean, obviously, your organization um has has, you know, legal, legalese, uh, people that are, you know, paid to give you advice. Have the, ha- have you received any advice on on how this might be viewed by the courts on, say, a charter challenge?
So although I'm not practicing, I do myself hold a jurisprudence. I have reviewed this. Um, I've reviewed this with colleagues as well who are legal practitioners. We've also reviewed um the jurisprudence from like-minded Commonwealth countries, particularly Australia. And as a result, we do believe that this would pass a reasonable limitations test under section one of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. It's not a ban that engages um in the private lives of Canadians. It's a ban on conduct within the public sphere that has a demonstrably negative impact on other Canadians. So I'm not saying it won't be challenged in court, but I do believe that uh, and I also, we haven't seen the legislation that the federal government will uh will present, but the concept certainly, I think, is one that's compatible with charter jurisprudence.
Okay. Um, I believe that is uh all of my questions. Thank you again for coming in and speaking to this uh very passionately, which uh, you know, obviously it demands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, um, I'm at sixteen. I've got four councillors that do not have their cameras on, so I can't count them. Five that don't have their cameras on. So um, as we continue, um, uh, when you leave the room, we will not be in quorum, just so you know. Oh, wait, one member of council just turned their camera on, so we're at seventeen.
Mr. Chair, I'll be leaving in fifteen minutes to attend the funeral.
Yep, so that's, that's, so members of council, I, I, our, councillor Chapman and to the members of Oshawa Council, councillor, deeply sorry about the loss of your firefighter. And um, so members of council, what will happen, just so you know, if we lose quorum, then this will go to council. So just so you're aware. So I'm going to ask that when I ask you for a question, that's how we address the delegation. It is a question. It's not a preamble. It is a direct question, and we'll move along the best we can. Now councillor Kerr, I'm going to rely upon you to show an example of the direct question. Okay.
I'm usually very succinct, and I will be no less so today. Thank you for your, both of your important delegations. One question, to the best of your knowledge, are there any other symbols or icons that are banned in Canada, or does this set an a precedent, an important precedent, but or does this set a precedent?
As to the best of my knowledge, as an outright ban, no, this would set an important precedent. And as I explained in my delegation, I can't think of a more fitting symbol for us to set such a precedent with.
Thank you very much. That's, that's it, Chair.
Thank you. And to the delegates, succinct, quick answers, please, would be appreciated. Um, councillor Brenner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the delegation. Richard, can you um elaborate a little bit further on the increasing use of the swastika in terms of promoting Nazism?
Most certainly. And as I explained in my delegation, um, we continue to see a rise in the the public display of the swastika in Canada. There was a a house in Kitchener, Ontario. There were several instances of its display uh at other um residential properties. We saw a swastika being flown at the trucker convoy. We see swastikas being flown at and other uh flags containing Nazi iconography at various political protests across country, uh across the country. To be honest, there's in a succinct fashion, too many instances for me to uh to identify for 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 the regional council, but the their use has been uh frequent enough that uh it's it's caused the utmost concern within our organization, and we believe that now is the time to act.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. It's such a wealth of knowledge. I will be quick um as we're pressed for time. This, the incidents discussed with regards to a swastika, swastika painted on a house of a person of non-Jewish faith, would that incident be captured inside this motion from your read of it?
No. And that is because what we're trying to do is to ban the public display of the swastika. So this would prevent people from bringing uh flags containing the swastika to protest, et cetera. We could never stop people from graffitiing.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, uh, that exhausts the questions. Thank you mu- very much for being here today. Uh, next
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would be uh David Lamorpe, Lead Pastor, King Street Community Church.
I'm speaking to eight point one and eight point two together in one reading, and I'm sorry if it's bundled together. Um, my name is David Lamorpe. I'm a resident of Brooklyn, and I serve as Lead Pastor at King Street Community Church in Oshawa. I have lived in the Durham Region for almost twenty-five years, and this is my home, and I care deeply about the future of our community. To our Durham Region councillors, thank you for what you do. On behalf of our church community, we value you very, your very important contribution to our region, and we pray for you often. Over the past year, we have witnessed an upsetting growth in antisemitism in Canada, and this does not reflect our country's cherished values of tolerance, pluralism, mutual respect, and deep commitment to human rights. In a world where divisive rhetoric or rhetoric and extremism threatens our social fabric, it is more crucial than ever to champion healthy dialogue, cooperation, and public policy that reflects mutual respect and care for one another. Since the events of October seven, twenty twenty-three, the Jewish community has not felt safe in many parts of our world, including Canada, including right here in the Durham Region. The rise of antisemitism has been deeply concerning with incidents reported in school boards where Jewish children have been swarmed in public school washrooms, having swastikas, which is a deeply offensive hate symbol, written on their notebooks, inscribed on the Whitby Library exterior walls, applied to sports fields in our own community, written over children's faces that were on posters in Jewish neighborhoods in Toronto. The recent IRA document outlines that the Jewish community represents about one percent of the Canadian population, and yet they are the target of seventy percent of the religiously motivated hate crimes in our country, and synagogues are spending more money than ever on increased security. Jewish day schools, synagogues, and local businesses have been the target of hate speech and acts of violence. University campuses have been breeding grounds of hate and intimidation of Jewish students. The Jewish community have been positive contributors to our education, arts, healthcare, business, government, not-for-profit sectors. They have made our community better, and right now they feel alone and harassed uh by a small minority of extreme actors. They feel forgotten by a large majority of Canadians. Unfortunately, the swastika has made a comeback. It is a deplorable hate symbol that must be condemned. Tolerance is an important Canadian value, but if we tolerate the wrong behaviors and accommodate hate speech and call it free speech, we will have taken tolerance to a destructive extreme and applied it in a way that is not beneficial to our society. Our elected officials have a moral responsibility and obligation to ensure that our streets and neighborhoods are safe for everyone and that good policies are in place and that those policies are being applied in our schools, communities, to promote the physical, emotional, and mental well-being of everyone, especially the minority groups. In a healthy and highly functional society, we will take good care of one another, and we have not been taking good care of our Jewish friends. We have not served well as our brothers and sisters keeper, and it's time for us to do so. In Whitby, more than half the population identify as Christian, with just point three percent of the population being Jewish. The majority group has an obligation to protect the minority group. And the Christian community refers to the Jewish community as our elder siblings, and their Judeo-Christian worldview is set in the same breath because they are tightly bound together. I represent a local church of almost twelve hundred people who would identify with King Street Community Church as their church home, and we are quite concerned about the trend of antisemitism. We're committed to building strong bridges of relational trust and advocacy for our Jewish friends. We are growing tired of the continued harassment directed at our Jewish neighbors and are asking for our municipal leaders to take action. I personally wrote a letter of solidarity and circulated it among my Christian clergy colleagues in the GTA with fifty clergy signed the letter. The letter of solidarity represents tens of thousands of congregants in our community who are concerned and have pledged themselves to act on behalf of the Jewish community. Many municipalities in the GTA have recently not been living up to their great reputation. We have an opportunity to stand the right side of history by defending the rights of all citizens, especially of minority groups that are in the crosshairs of hate. Any act of hate and violence against the Jewish community is an act of hate against the Christian community because they are our family. Any act or threat of violence against the Jewish community is an attack on us as Canadians and the values we celebrate. My grandfathers both served in the Canadian military and fought in World War Two to secure our country and world so that we would be free and safe. They put their life on the line to resist the hate that was represented by the swastika. It was no, there has no place in our respectful society. Each of us has a part to play in continuing to ensure that our community and country remains free and safe for generations to come. Dietrich Bonhoeffer, who was a German pastor and scholar, writer, and activist for the Jewish community, who eventually became a martyr, he wrote these words. He says, silence in the face of evil is itself evil. Not to speak is to speak, and the ultimate test of a moral society is the kind of world that it leaves for its children. Our Jewish friends are committed to tikkun alam, to be repairers of the world, and together we can make the world a better place. So let's start with our own region, making sure everyone feels welcome and safe. The time for action is now. It's not complicated, it's simple, really, just deciding to do the next right thing. And the next right thing is to make sure that everyone is safe by making a concerted and consistent push against hate. So let's not tolerate the wrong symbols that carry historic messages of extreme hate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. You were speaking to both items, right?
I was, yes.
Thank you. Before we go on, um, Mr. Clerk, I'm gonna have to get you to call a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Councillor Anderson, sit in your chair, please. Thank you. Members of council, we've lost quorum. But we still have quorum. Quorum is fifteen. We're at fifteen. So that means you cannot leave your seats, or we'll have to recess if you need to step out, or we'll have to adjourn. Okay. Um, Mayor Roy, questions or questions to me?
Just to make a comment, I sent a note to the clerk. Uh, both myself and councillor Macahy do have to leave here at one forty-five for two P M. So we have an hour.
So we have an hour. Okay, so members of council. Um, questions to Mr. Lamorpe? Seeing none, uh, thank you for your delegation.
Thank you so much.
Um, our next delegation is Josh Landau, Director of Government Relations, Ontario Centre for Israel, Israel and Jewish Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm going to speak to both motions, as I know that we are pressed for time. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I am Josh Landau, Director of Government Relations, Ontario, appearing on behalf of the Centre for Israel and Jewish Affairs, SEJA. We are a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization representing more than a hundred fifty thousand Canadian Jews affiliated through their local Jewish federations. Among our objectives is fighting against antisemitism, hatred of all kinds, and protecting the quality of Jewish life in Canada. I'm here today to speak to two important motions put forward by councillor Leahy. As Jewish life in Canada, including in this region, is under threat, the Jewish community faces an alarming rise in antisemitism, I outline why these motions are so critical. Unfortunately, as I'm sure you know all too well, hatred is prevalent in Canada, and Jews are the most targeted group since twenty twenty-three. Over the past sixteen months, there's been a marked and shocking increase in antisemitism in Ontario that has seen the Jewish community victimized by instances of violence, intimidation. Jewish schools have been shot at, synagogues firebombed, Jewish-owned businesses vandalized, and Jewish neighborhoods targeted by intimidating protests. We see this trend currently rising with no end in sight or mitigating strategies to protect our community. Police reported hate crime for twenty twenty-three validates the concern about which our community has been warning. Antisemitism has risen to levels unseen in modern times. Despite representing only one percent of Canada's population, the Jewish community is the most frequently targeted group when it comes to hate crimes in Canada. And unfortunately, this region has not been immune to this disturbing trend. In August, Nazi swastika was found burned in the grass of a soccer field at Prince of Wales Park. And just last month, graffiti Nazi swastikas were discovered multiple times at Whitby Central Library, including on January twenty-seventh, International Holocaust Remembrance Day, a solemn day to honor the memory of the six million Jewish children, women, and men murdered by the Nazis during World War Two, during the Holocaust. So we commend the councillor for his leadership, those that put forward their their seconds, and Mayor Roy for her leadership as well. So one motion among many items highlights looking for ways to educate residents about antisemitism, strategies to combat antisemitism, including a potential antisemitism education campaign, which we fully support. Education is a key component to addressing this rising hate. And we support Durham Region in developing their own educational resource or campaign. And we also support the possibility of establishing a protocol to notify human rights organizations when hate-motivated acts are identified. The collection of data is key to understanding the problem. Collaboration between council, human rights organizations, including Benabreth, will aid in identifying and tackling any cases of antisemitism in the region. And the second motion urges the federal government to take immediate action to ban the Nazi swastika and other Nazi iconography. The Nazi swastika is the ultimate symbol of hate and violence. Its presence in Canada undermines our core values of inclusion and safety for all, and this motion is a crucial step forward, ensuring all Canadians, all Canadians, are protected from hate, and SEJA strongly supports this. By doing so, align Canada with many other countries that have already enacted similar measures. And while we advocate for the ban on the Nazi swastika and the Nazi iconography, like other delegations before me, it's important to clarify that the swastika's use in traditional religious contexts by Hindus, Buddhists, Jains, and Zoroastrians should remain protected and completely legal in Canada. Once again, thank you, and every Canadian has a right to live without fear, and we encourage the passing of these motions. Thank you for your time and commitment to making Durham Region a safe and inclusive place for all.
Thank you. We do have questions. Councillor Schumer, or Mayor Schumer?
Thank you again, uh, Mr. Chair, and and thank you for coming out and speaking to this. Uh, in your role as uh, you know, Government Relations uh Director, what what has been the response? What kind of feedback have you gotten from the federal government in in getting this legislation uh in place?
So I'm Director of Government Relations for Ontario, for the Ontario region. I don't actually deal specifically with the federal government, but there's certainly some interest in various levels with various MPs and uh for for such a tactic. And, you know, MP Julian put forward that private member, that bill. Uh, and so obviously, there is some appetite for doing so, for banning these symbols of hate.
And and on that, do you have any enlightenment on why that bill back in twenty twenty-one or so seemed to have died?
Yeah, I I, to be honest, I am not sure. Uh, I I do know it's at first reading. Uh, there might be some kind of legislative um rationale for doing so, uh, but that's a an excellent question, uh, uh, regional councillor. Um, but we have called for this kind of action to be taken, to ban the Nazi symbol, to ban Nazi iconography um uh under the criminal code.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, member, and I'm and I'm sorry to to the delegations. Uh, councillor Yamada, I need to see you in your chair. I think you're there. Councillor Yamada, I, the challenge is keeping quorum, and we don't have quorum right now. Well, he's moving, so I guess he is there. Um, Mayor, okay, councillor Yamada, we need to see you in the picture, please. Um, Mayor Roy.
I'm very quick, but I'm going to continue on the vein of that questioning from uh Mayor Schumer. Uh, having looked at the the twenty twenty-one um legislation that was brought to first reading, it didn't make it past December twen- twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And uh, with it being a private members' bill, what's the opportunity with a current MP, which is where legislation probably would be successful to bring that forward?
Sorry, could you repeat the question there?
So essentially, so it was an, it was private members' bill.
Correct.
NDP brought it forward.
Yeah.
It did not make it past first reading. What's the potential of having a sitting party member to bring them forward? What's the potential of having a sitting party member to bring them forward, the legislation forward?
I mean, that would be fantastic. That's why we, like the Nebrith, are urging the federal government to do so. So having a federal MP from the Liberal Party, from the governing party, bring forward such a piece of legislation is something that we want, and obviously we are cognizant of the fact that Parliament is pro, and it's very likely potentially moving to a federal election soon, and so we would urge all parties, all MPs, to bring forward such a kind of bill in the future. And that's why we're here, to urge council, to urge the federal government to take this action.
Yeah, and I understand that, like, we can lobby for you, but the opportunity to actually bring it forward, it also relies on the leaders of each one of the parties to be the ones to participate, and I think that's the big hurdle.
I think you're spot on, Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through the chair, just really brief. So clearly, my understanding is you're supportive of the motion. Would you be willing to consult with regional staff on developing the protocol and get some insight from your side?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to provide my contact information to staff, and please reach out to us and use us as a resource.
No, I appreciate that. Just wanted to be clear and supportive of both the motions. Thank you.
So thank you. That exhausts the questions, so thank you for being here today. The next is Sari Watson, a resident through virtual attendance. Mr. Clerk? She's not connected. So what we'll do is we will come back, and we will try to connect to her. Next, we'll go to Rabbi Borstein, Director of the Shabbat Jewish Center of Durham Region. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, my name is Rabbi Tzali Borstein, and I am the director, together with my wife, Chana, we run the Chabadu Center of Durham Region. My wife and I, we moved here in 2010, and thank God, we have a growing Jewish community. We have about 600 families that are active, then there's other Jews. We estimate at least 1,000 Jewish families in the region, and it's growing all the time. I want to say, first of all, that by and large Durham Region is a great place to live. My family and I are so happy to be here, and we are so thankful to the many great people, whether it's, we personally live in Whitby and in the region at large, and we just want to say thank you. We have a great relationship with the Durham Regional Police Services, and we want to take it to another level, because while most people are fantastic people, there is still hate, and when we are silent, as other delegates said before, unfortunately, they almost take that as a, as an acknowledgement, or they feel like they can continue with this hate. And when, when we are not silent, and we say the, and it's the vast majority of people say we are against this terrible hate, then the hate can stop. You know, we spoke before about schools being shot at. I know most of you here, my daughters, we bring them to school, my kids, every single day, and particularly two of my daughters are in that school that was shot at three times, and it impacts them. My, one of my daughters this morning went, because she was just diagnosed with anxiety from their school being shot at once, twice, three times within six months, is unbelievably difficult, and it affects them in a very, very meaningful way, and they are scared. You also appreciate when we see police, and sometimes at our little synagogue, there are six police cars there for protection. Chair, you've been with us at an event, and you were shocked, like, how much protection we need, and that's unacceptable. My grandfather was the only survivor of his family after the Holocaust, and he came to Canada, and he made a life in Canada. My grandmother has been here for many generations. They're both buried in Canada, and they always spoke about how Canada is a beacon of acceptance and love, and any hate of the Nazis would never be accepted here. And I feel like the fact that we even have to debate this is a sad state of affairs. We are people that want to make a difference. We mentioned that the, that the latest swastikas were found in the library where we had the menorah lighting. The menorah lighting, in the menorah, there's the regular candles, and then there's one candle that's a little bit higher, it's called the shemash. The shemash is a helper candle, someone who helps out others. According to our tradition, those are people that give up from their life to say that I want to give back to my community, to be the helper. It means you're away from home more than most people, you're campaigning, you're busy, but you have the opportunity to literally light up the rest of the region. You have the opportunity to light those candles, the candles of love, acceptance, and where everyone should feel comfortable. The fact is, people in Durham Region, and I've been, we've been running the Jew Center since 2010, and it's growing, and there's many families that want to move here, but every time there's a swastika, you could literally see the anxiety, the fear. Almost everyone is a direct descendant of someone who was an only survivor of a Holocaust or lost most of their family, or they know a very good friend that did. The Nazi symbol is a symbol of telling him that you don't belong here. There are so many instances of hate that I could speak of that happened, unfortunately, right here. I don't feel like we have a lot of time, but I'll mention one girl that she, she was, she learnt, they learnt about the Holocaust in school, and then when she came back after recess, there was a swastika written on her desk, and it said that Hitler did not finish the job, and they kept bullying her to the point where she unfortunately tried to commit suicide. The family caught her after she already wrote her note. She was in the hospital, and I visited her, and it was so difficult for me. This is what the Nazi symbolism means. There should not be a debate if it's allowed to be. This happened right here, right here in Whitby. This is so difficult for people. It's not just another symbol of hate. This is a symbol saying that there are people that don't have the right to exist, and that is not acceptable in Canada, not acceptable around the world. Thank you.
So Rabbi, you, that was, you were speaking to both?
On behalf of time, I try to put everything together within...
Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you, Chair. Really brief, thank you so much, Rabbi, for coming out this evening and joining us here today. Really briefly, so clearly, you support both motions.
Absolutely. I think it's so important to, A, have the fact that the region can tell everyone, every Jewish person that they're safe, and we care about them, and we do, and we will report any Nazi swastika, and we, this way we could actually stop it. And of course, if we could, if we could work, and we can work with local MPs to actually bring it up, you know, together with the region, to make sure this becomes a federal ban, and I'm happy to help in any way I can.
No, and I appreciate that. And then last question, is there anything you think we need to change in the motions or you're comfortable with the wording as it is?
I feel like the, we all spoke about the little nitty gritties. Of course, no one should ever feel like we can't speak about it for history purposes. I feel like if we don't learn from history, unfortunately, we're bound to repeat it. So as long as it's very important that we can continue to learn about the Holocaust, we can make sure there's 18% of students right now don't believe in the Holocaust. 18% of either, or believe it's extremely exaggerated. That needs to continue to be taught, and I think that was very clearly put into the, you know, that's in the motion, but that's just something that I think is very important.
No, that's, that's, that's super helpful. So no, I appreciate that. Thank you so much for coming, and I appreciate your diligence. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Wu?
Yeah, through the chair, and thank you, Rabbi, and for everybody that spoke. Counselor Leahy did mention, were you satisfied with both motions, and the first one, and I'm trying to wrap my head around, and the term was used, and first time I've heard it, awful but awful, but noncriminal acts, and I think Richard tried to speak with that, but, you know, I get the sort of the connotation with when you say noncriminal, you know, the interpretation of that, you know, it might be less important, or might give disproportionate view of Durham Region, you know, being a hotbed of hate or worse. Is there a way of, another word that can be used?
So first of all, I believe that Durham Region is not, is not a very, it's a very good place. There's just a very few really bad people which are trying to bring down the whole region. I think there's tremendously great people in this region, but there are, I think it's important to have a very broad view, because I think that will inspire people. I know there's so many people in the community that they're like, oh, it's not, we know it's not going to be a crime, they don't even report it. There's so many people in intimidation, calling for their destruction, and it's important, if we kind of leave it a little bit broad, so people can feel like I can actually report it, even if maybe it's not a crime, and then they will define, obviously, if it's not a crime, it should not, and if it's not something that's worthwhile, it will, it will be discarded. But there are so many things that people are not sure once, is it actually considered a crime or not? Let them report it, and then we'll take it from there, and to see if it's actually part of statistics or not.
Okay. And my last question, and you mentioned about Counselor Leahy and Counselor Yamada. Were you aware, a while ago, I guess, I can hardly say, last year towards the end, brought forward a motion for a hate crime unit, and this council, in the budget for the police service says we do have a hate crime unit now. Were you aware?
I was aware. Thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you.
Members of council, we have not been able to connect with Sari Watson, so we will move on to 512 Denise Brugo, resident, and she's here in attendance.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. So I have here with me a report. It's called "Antisemitism in Canada Report" by the Ministry of Diaspora Affairs and "Combating Antisemitism." It's just one report. Talks about antisemitism in Canada, antisemitic, antisemitic generators and influencers in Canada, major antisemitic, anti-Israel attacks since May 31, all antisemitic incidents between May and October, and, and that is, I did submit this for, I submitted this through the process as, as something that might have been available to, to talk with, with you, not at you. But anyways, I have this report, and it's available. I did submit it, so I'll talk about it. It's alarming. We need to understand the difference between incidents and hate crimes, because they're both valuable. There, the hate crimes is something that needs to be determined, usually by police, but the incidents are important to also report and, and measure within your community. Alarmingly, this report starts, starts off by saying, since October 7th, 23, Canada has experienced a significant surge in antisemitism, marked by a 670% increase in incidents compared to the previous year. So that, that's definitely worth, it's worth measuring. Not all incidents of hate crimes are even actually reported, so to come up with those kind of statistics on just what's being reported indicates that it's, it's actually even worse. To, to measure the, these incidents, I think the reporting looks like this. It looks like creating a workflow, which includes first disclosure, then a legal review, and then actions taken, and that should complete the process. So your actions taken might be reporting to police, it might be liaising with some of the other organizations you've heard from today, to create a sort of central reporting What you're looking to measure through a reporting protocol is the nature and origin of the incident or the offense, or the crime, severity, risk to the public, and where and how it should be escalated. So on the last few pages of this report, it actually, it actually has a rundown of the incidents that were logged and reported through this particular organization, and to give you an idea of categorizing, they categorize it by risk level. So something that is low on the risk level, and actually, the swastika in the Whitby Park was one of the incidents here. Incident was a verbal or written threat, that's a low risk, but it's still measuring the, the sort of environment that you're having. Next would be incident could have or did damage a building or monument, and then, of course, when you're in the red, it looks like incident could have or did harm a large number of people or a community. So, I mean, you can think of it in terms of hate crime, and how a legal review may determine that, and then dispense the rest, but I don't think any of this should ever be dispensed, because it's measuring the risk to your community, because the more that you tolerate, the more it escalates, and that's the risk to your community. And I think, I think that's where I'll leave it. I had a whole speech, but I'm going to leave it there.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you, through the chair. So just your support, in support of both motions?
Yes.
Okay. And you're comfortable with the language, there's nothing you would think we need to
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, I know that the Jewish community are, are hearing a lot of calls of violence, or, you know, elimination, and that's, that's horribly serious, but if you want this to encompass more groups in our society, you need, you need to have a lot of broad language. So I didn't, I don't have anything to offer legally, but maybe just pass it through your legal, legal review.
Perfect. No, I appreciate that, and thank you for spending your day with us so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Ira Wallfish has withdrawn his, both of his delegations. We'll move on to 5.15 Sam Eskenasi online. Yeah, he's here. Good afternoon.
Yeah, sorry, let me just get my camera setting set up. I apologize, I had to leave my work early because my children's school decided to call for a snow day, even though it is not snowing yet, so I apologize. Give me just three, 10 more seconds.
Will you be speaking to both items at once?
Yeah, of course, in the interest of time, of course, I'm happy to, I'm happy to join both, and I, everything set up. Okay, I'm not sure if this will function properly. There we go. Are we all set here?
Yes, we are.
Okay, perfect. Actually, I'm going to try and, I'm going to go upside down. Okay. Okay, so in the interest of time, I'll just sort of jump into the issue, and I think I'll attempt to tackle everything from a bit of a different, bit of different...
Sam, if you could please hit the request to speak button again.
You know, members of council, while we're doing this, I'm going to go to item 6.1, which is a recommendation to refer the consideration of the motion regarding protecting Canadian values and banning the Nazi swastika, item 8.2. Can I get a mover, moved by Counselor Mokahi, seconded by Counselor Leahy, on referring the recommendation? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition, seeing none? Thank you. We'll go back to Sam. Sam?
So, so sorry about that. So I was mentioning, you know, I'd like to speak just sort of on a bit of a different, different tact than, than the other speakers who spoke wonderfully to the motion. I think that, again, there are, you know, there might be some issues to iron out in terms of practicality, but I think I want to speak to the larger issue of antisemitism, and I'll, I'll just give a brief background about myself and the organization, and why I think, you know, we might be in a unique position to speak out. So Organization LAD Canada, we, in 2021, sort of in the middle of COVID, we received funding from the federal government to come up with a antisemitism training program for police, first responders, and public sector workers, and it was really aimed at providing practical knowledge, things that would really help these individuals on their job on the day-to-day, so, you know, not something that was very challenging to bring to the, to the workplace. Through that experience, we developed a number of displays, so physical displays and museums that, that travel around the province, and one of the biggest... And one of the biggest sort of pieces of feedback that we have received from the individuals is that they really don't necessarily know anything about Jews or Judaism or even what antisemitism is. And because they lack that information, it's often very difficult for them to understand what it is we're talking about. It would be like, you know, if you wanted to understand a concept, but you just had no frame of reference for any of the words. And so I think that is sort of the tact which I'll speak on. And as regards antisemitism itself, I think it's important to keep in mind that the motions here are not necessarily about, you know, keeping track of the reports. Obviously, I don't think that anyone is under the impression that banning the swastika is going to make it disappear. I mean, if rules were to make things happen just on their own, my kids' room would always be clean. They would never, you know, talk back or do any of these things. So I think as regards antisemitism, understanding it, and I'll start with, you know, the famous poem that, you know, first they came for the communists and I didn't speak out. First, then they came for the socialists and I didn't speak out. You know, first they came for these people, then I didn't speak out. And then they came for the Jews and, you know, I didn't speak out. And finally, they came for me. And I think antisemitism is mostly thought of in that way. So we, you know, we condemn antisemitism because the people who hold these antisemitic views will eventually come after other people. Unfortunately, I don't think that is the entire picture, and I don't even think that's the majority picture as much as it might be true. Antisemitism itself is often thought of as unique, you know, it's very long-lived. It manifests in places where there are no Jews and it really defies logical reason. Obviously, hatred can be thought of as, you know, a simple difference. I don't like you because you look different than me. I don't like you because you have a different skin color than me. But a lot of times antisemitism presents itself as a grand conspiracy theory. And I think, you know, to the rabbi's point about Holocaust denial, this is really where the issue arises. It is not that questioning or learning about history is at issue. It's, well, you start off with the premise that the Holocaust did not happen. Therefore, the Jews must have made it up or people must have made it up. Okay, well, why and how did they perpetrate this hoax on everybody? And you start getting into the most ridiculous conspiracy theories. You know, it ends up in some sort of weird Schrodinger's Jew where Jews are both victims and perpetrators and both at the same time. And so, you know, to really recap, I think that, and I guess it's fitting that I'm the last speaker, I think it's about sending a message to the residents of Durham that we're not going to tolerate or accept this sort of disordered thinking, this sort of way of thinking about other groups that leads to hate crimes. And again, not just toward Jews, not just towards minority groups, but eventually has downstream effects on all of society, right? The problem is not really, you know, it's not just a moral problem or just an ethical problem. It's a structural problem in the ways of thinking, right? Facts matter, logic matters, words matter, the definitions of these words matter. And so it's not just about hating Jews. All of this is about the truth, about twisting reality to fit, you know, very warped worldviews sometimes. And just, again, resulting in disordered thinking that will ultimately negatively affect everyone in the region and the province and the broader country. So I think that's the message that is being sent here today. Again, details, you know, about the reporting, which is important, might still need to be figured out. I think they're critically important, and I definitely thank the council for supporting both of the motions. But I truly just wanted to recap as to what antisemitism itself does to a society or to a group as opposed to maybe the specifics, which have been well-covered by some of the other individuals and people who have spoken today.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Members of council, we've dealt with item 6.1. We have report 7.1. It's located on page 41 of your agenda, the recommendation. This is about Ritz and Road School. Can I get a mover, Mayor Roy? Seconded by Counselor Wu. The item's now on the floor. Questions? Seeing none? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none? That carries. Item 7.2, we have dealt with. 7.3 is the diversity plan for Durham Regional Police Services. It's located on page 110 of your agenda. I'm looking for a mover, moved by Counsel Leahy, seconded by Counsel Anderson. The item is now on the floor. Counsel Lee?
Thank you, Chair. Great to see this come to fruition. I think these are great recommendations that hopefully the police board kind of take into their consideration when deciding their membership. There was one step that I was, I'm trying to find my note right now. It's, we, there's another, so we, the board, the region essentially recommends certain applicants. And then there's another group that ultimately decides which ones qualify. Who was made up of that? How's that group composed? Who's made up of that group?
I'll go to Allison. Allison?
Thank you. Counsel Lee, are you speaking outside the appointment committee? So the appointment committee would review the applications and then would bring it to council for approval.
No, I think it goes, then it goes after council's approved. Then doesn't it go back to the DRPS or no?
No, there is an additional step.
Okay, so that committee then?
Yes.
Who decides membership? How is it made up? Is that rotating? Is it set people? Do we get to know who they are?
It is noted in the plan. So there is a member from the Anti-Racism Task Force, a committee member that we're recommending, the commissioners of Social Services and Finance or delegates.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it is noted in the plan.
But that's the recommendation for the future? Is that the composition now?
No, so this is very new. So this is the mandate from the provincial government, from the New Community and Safety Policing Act. So this requirement for the municipal diversity plan is new and should come into effect as of April 1. So this does not exist?
So currently, the way the process, understood. So currently, just want to confirm the process. The process right now, as it stands then, is that, you know, the region will pick some representatives. How are the, for lack of a better phrase, civilian representatives picked?
Can I defer that back to the chair? As I'm not involved in that process right now.
Sure.
Province nominees and citizens reps?
We're just confirming that right now, but it's our understanding that the province is the body that appoints the citizen reps. And the region generally appoints members of council to sit on the board.
Okay. And these are, if this passes at COW today and then ratified at council, does the DRPS have to enact this or this is more or less a strongly worded suggestion?
So this is created by the Minister of Justice, isn't it?
Yes, it is a provincial mandate.
Provincial mandate.
The legislation under the New Community and Safety Policing Act. So not a nice new mandate.
So yeah, so once council approves this, then in a sense, board selection going forward will follow this prescribed process?
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you for you and your team for your work on this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Counsel Wu?
Yes, and through the chair to either the CAO or Allison. Have you had consultation with the Police Services Board or the chief on this?
With members from DRPS as well as the executive director of the board. And I also believe that we have connected with some members of the board as well.
Okay. Now, there are some items in here that, when you look at section three, under definitions, diversity, and I pulled up the, if you want to say, the Human Rights Code and definitions under there. So some line up with a diversity, whether it be race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, physical, religious beliefs. But I don't see anywhere under what you would consider within the human rights, political beliefs or other ideologies. What is that? Other ideologies, again, I think that in itself, how do you, you know, when you're picking somebody or choosing from applicants, you have that in there.
So this could be, oh, sorry, this could be how folks self-identify. Could be other values that they hold, other concepts that inform how the lens that they apply to the world and how they navigate the world. So it could be just how folks self-identify. And that is part of that process, that we would like folks to voluntarily self-identify so that we're able to capture those areas that are under the protected grounds through the code.
I would, you know, and again, this doesn't go through the region as far as hiring police. It'll go through the chief and the police services. And my understanding in that, that it would be, I'm not going to say impossible, but certainly it's flawed.
Can you, flawed in what way, Counselor?
Well, you start bringing in, if you're using political beliefs and, you know.
So Counselor, I think I can help you. So it doesn't change how council appoints members to the board, other than we have to follow a criteria. The appointments that are not the responsibility of this council or not be by this council are mandated by the process itself. So what we're doing on our side was mandated to us. The question you have is to someone related to the provincial appointments? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that is correct. Yes.
We have no control over provincial appointments.
Well, and I'm just wondering if this lines up to, you know, I mean, I know the three that are, or the four, I should say, from regional council, the three regional counselors and the one citizen chosen by, and we're going with seven. The three from the province and trying to line that up because we should have the same criteria, shouldn't we? Because it's coming through the Community Safety Applicating Act.
I'll try to have our CAO respond, but we're responding to what was sent to us by another level of government to fulfill what they're looking for. I will comment on whether I think it's not flawed, but if our CAO wants to respond.
Allison and I did have that very discussion. Ideally, a similar transparent process would be applied across the board. But all of, the only component that the region can control and has any input into is in its own appointments, which is why this is before you today. So we have absolutely no oversight or control over provincial appointments.
And if I may, we have included that in the plan, that similar considerations should be made with the provincial appointees. So we've noted that in the plan.
Okay. But also recognizing the regional appointments are for the length of the term of council, whereas the provincial appointments may not be the same length.
You know, I understand and I'm as concerned as you are, but I'm also concerned with an act that's only available online and it hasn't been put into book form yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Carter?
First of all, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My question is, does that mean that you, as the regional chair, the authority of appointing those individuals that you have in the past, moving forward, that you will not have that authority?
So my understanding is that the chair of a region or an upper tiered government always has the opportunity to sit on the Police Services Board. And then it's up to council through due process to appoint the members from council. It's not, and from the chair's perspective, I do have the right, well, whoever the chair is, has the right to propose an alternate. But other than that, Mayor Carter, that's all I can tell you.
But just for clarification, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure. I understand the provincial side. I understand the policing act. They're asking this mandate to be put in place. Does the regional chair, you are a regional chair, you must follow that criteria to a T once you make your selection process of the 28 members of council that you try and bring forward to serve on those boards? Is that my understanding?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Now, the other thing I want to make clear is, this takes effect when, Mr. Chairman?
April 1st.
So the policing act is now in place. So are we saying that immediately, once it passes council, those members on the police board have to be disbanded on the regional side and new appointees have to be put in place for the next two years?
No, it would continue to the next term of council.
But then we must follow the criteria that's been outlined under the policing act, correct?
Except if there is, for some reason, an agency on the Police Services Board by a member of council, the new rules would apply.
Yeah, and that's fair. I just didn't, I wanted to get that clear because I don't, you know, there's two interpretations. It's changed now, so does that mean it has to change now? But moving forward, absolutely. I think that the idea and the concept behind it and the commitment behind it is to make sure it truly reflects the community that our police services serves and that it must truly reflect that diversity all the way across the eight municipalities and the 2,500 square kilometers. And I think Counsel Wu asked some very good questions in his inquiry. So I think there's, I tried to look at what that criteria is. I think there's some missing components when it comes to the kind of diversity because you're going to have diversity of not only those that maybe have different educational levels. Does that come into play or is it just based upon those criterias that are there?
I can respond to that if I may.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, the new act does tell us that we are looking to approve a diversity plan that ensures that the members of the municipal board appointed by the municipality are representatives of the diversity of the population in the municipality. So of course, we do welcome diversity of lived experience, diversity of thought. But in terms of core diversity principles, this is what we'd be looking at. And this is why we connected it to the protected grounds under the Ontario Human Rights Code.
That's a great point. I just want to follow up with your statement. Does that also take into consideration economically that we may have individuals that are economically challenged that would be represented on the board also? Does that come into consideration?
Socioeconomic status is one of the protected grounds. And under that, we would look at all areas of socio-economic dynamics.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much for the clarification. I greatly appreciate it. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Crawford?
Thank you. I'm curious. I've only been on the regional board for a couple of years, a couple of terms. In 218, there was, it was an appointment and an election to the police board. And in 220, it was a list of people presented to council. No election, no nominations. That was the list that we voted on. So what was the difference between the two terms?
Oh, one is, we went through great effort to put a list of people forward that council voted on at that.
But that's not a nomination process.
It can be done either way. Council still did the, voted on what was presented or they could have changed it.
So how are you supposed to know, like, we all lobbied people to say we wanted, we're interested, only to find out we were never part of it? Because the year before, we would, you know, try to lobby the votes and everything else to see if you were going to get on the board. And there would be a nomination period and people would put their names forward and we would all vote on it. And then this year was just like, no nomination, here's the list, that's it.
It was presented as a motion. The motion could have been changed.
Okay. That was very different.
Okay, members of council, I think we've exhausted the item. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none? That carries. Members of council, I would like to try to deal with 8.1 and 8.2 while we have people in the audience. So Counsel Leahy, would you like to move 8.1? Move to lift it from the table? Okay, Counsel Yamada, seconded?
Mr. Chair, seconded, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Counsel Leahy, you've already spoken to this.
Yeah, I'll speak to the next one. I don't need to speak to this one. Just looking for a recorded vote. Yes, please, thank you.
Recorded vote is called. Mayor Foster, we do have a hard stop, members of council, 1:45.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, but in discussion and dialogue, I mean, I think we were hearing that staff were looking for all of the expert advice and would come back with recommendations, frankly, on both of these. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll give you a motion to refer this back to staff for a report.
Okay, so a motion to refer back to staff, moved by Mayor Foster, is that seconded by Counsel Lee? Okay, right. Okay, right. Okay, so the referral is on the floor, councillor Nicholson.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a recorded vote.
The recorded vote on the referral. Thank you, councillor Nicholson. Mayor Roy?
Yeah, just on the referral, is there a time in place, but in the context, could you also have some discussion with our C A O as to the directive as to how Whitby's moving forward? Because there's also some additional conversation with the Durham Regional Police to be had.
That can happen, and timing wise, Madam C A O?
Could I say we'll aim for April?
Aim for April, okay. All right, on the referral, oh, sorry, councillor Pickles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Pickles.
I had made comments too, and I thought that the discussion.
I can barely hear you, try to get closer to your microphone, please.
Sorry, I thought the discussion with staff would be on the protocol that was coming back, not on the motions going forward.
It's on the referral right now, that's where we are. Record a vote on the referral. Mr. Clerk, I'll call the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, recorded vote on referring the motion back to staff is starting now. Okay, for Mayor Collier online. Second call for Mayor Collier online. Last call for Mayor Collier.
Okay, so the referral carries. Members of council, using the electronic vote count, we have 19 now, a couple of members of council have signed in electronically. Mayor Roy? So if you do have to leave, we're at 19, okay. We'll go to 8.2. Councillor Leahy, would you push your request to speak? Councillor Leahy, as the mover of the motion, I need a nod from councillor Yamada. Councillor Yamada, got it? Councillor Leahy, you have the floor.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of council, this is the motion that I wish I'd never had to move. Allow me to read it so that those that are here are understanding what we're debating. So, that we recommend to regional council, whereas the Durham Regional Council condemn in the strongest term possible, the recent, oh, no, it's number one, I'm on the wrong one, sorry, that we recommend to regional council, whereas in recent years Nazi iconography has surfaced with alarming frequency in the public sphere, used by an increasing number of groups and individuals to promote hate and instill fear within Canadian society. And whereas since the atrocities of World War II, the Nazi swastika, also known as the Hocken Cruze, has become universally synonymous with systematic violence, terror, and hate. Its growing presence in our community poses a threat to every single Canadian citizen, undermining the core values of equality, diversity, and inclusion that define our nation. And whereas 18 countries have already taken action to ban these symbols, it is imperative that Canada follow suit. Therefore be it resolved that Durham Regional Council supports Benay Breth's call to the Government of Canada to pass legislation banning the public display of Nazi symbols of iconography, including the Nazi swastika, also known as the Hocken Cruze, specifically demanding that the Government of Canada immediately ban the Nazi swastika, Hocken Cruze, ban all Nazi symbols and iconography. Durham Regional Council agrees that the people of Canada are counting on the federal government to ensure a future free from hate, where every Canadian is protected, valued, and respected, and that a copy of this motion is sent to all Canadian municipalities. So, Mr. Chair and members of council, if you ask any of my constituents in Whitby, if they want to see their next-door neighbor flying and saluting the Nazi swastika on a flagpole or in the street, they will tell you no. Most people consider the Nazi swastika to be a form of hate speech, and I agree with them. For those who believe the town and the region, the province of Ontario, or the country of Canada, should not ban the flying of the swazi, Nazi swastika, I invite them to come and speak, and we heard from them today. Many of the keyboard warriors who expressed opposition to the motion did not even bother to register. I challenged them online to tell the victims of hate to their face why they think the Nazi swastika is healthy for our community. I consider the Nazi swastika to be a symbol of hate, not just a symbol of antisemitism. The murderous Nazi regime is responsible for the death of 60 million people during the Second World War. Some of them were Durham Region residents, some of them are recognized just outside this chamber. Last week, we commemorated both the terrible, uh, two weeks ago, we commemorated both the terrible tragedy that occurred at the mosque in Quebec, and the 80th anniversary of the liberation of the Auschwitz concentration camp. Unfortunately, expressions of hate in all forms are on the rise, and we have to do something. In my opinion, if you don't stand against hate, then you stand with the haters, it's a binary choice. On a personal note, several times when I've made public statements about Islamophobia, antisemitism, or hate-motivated vandalism, I've gotten a call from a few people that basically just tell me to shut up. They're saying things like, you know, "Come on, Chris, it's not that bad." "Come on, Chris, it's just a few incidents." "Come on, Chris, this is bad for our reputation." I completely disagree with that position, and unfortunately, regrettably, Canada has not yet banned the Nazi swastika, also known as the Hocken Cruze, not to be confused with the swastika used by members of the Hindu and other faiths. Let me read off the countries that have successfully banned the Hocken Cruze and other symbols of Nazi iconography. Australia, Austria, Belarus, Brazil, China, the Czech Republic, France, Germany, Hungary, Israel, Poland, Romania, Russia, Slovakia, Sweden, Ukraine. Regrettably, Canada is not on this list. My motion is simply asking the federal parliament join many of our allies in protecting our communities from hate and the vile history associated with these symbols. Mr. Chair, members of council, I am hopeful that this motion will pass unanimously, so that under the mayor's and the regional chair's letterhead, we can write to the Parliament of Canada, letting them know that here at the region of Durham, we don't just talk the talk, but we walk the walk. And when we walk, we walk shoulder to shoulder with the victims of hate, not with the haters. For those who think that the idea of having to fight Nazis is the stuff of history in Hollywood movies, I urge you to search the Government of Canada website. The Canadian government has a named list of terrorist organizations that are available to members of the public, there are no fewer than six named neo-Nazis organizations in Canada, six. I was personally moved by the comments and the delegations that we heard here this afternoon and this morning, and I'm more committed than ever to doing the right thing for our diverse community. I really hope that we can have an anonymous support on this particular motion. I really don't see a need to refer this to staff, it's just to, as it calls in the motion, that we're reaching out to the federal government and supported the ban, and that's, that's what we're looking forward here, and ask for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my inclination was to refer to staff, but won't, won't do that, we're going to the Government of Canada. But in terms of walking the walk, should we be having a discussion, dialogue over what Durham region and what our local municipalities can do? And I know this is problematic. We had, you know, issues with the Confederate flag during discussion around anti-black racism and freedom of speech, but if, if we are going to walk the walk, should we be looking at what we can do, certainly on regional and municipal property? I, I would, I would think we've got control over that. I, I don't know about private property in the area.
Mayor, Mayor Foster, may I suggest that that's an entirely separate motion, and that it be dealt with on another day?
So, I, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, councillor McDougall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry, I apologize, I feel I need to address this. Unfortunately, and I'm not really understanding, I, I fully support the idea of the motion, what I don't understand is, is, is how my fellow councillor expected me to understand that the Benai Breth's call to the Canadian government include, excluded the use of educational and historical natures of the symbol. Through, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Leahy?
Yeah, no, for sure, so that is what's been online and what their support is, so instead of bringing in all the details, that was, again, to me seemed obvious, but I guess it's not for everybody, so we can, we can make an adjustment, for sure, but that's, was mentioned by the delegates, all the, their signature, their online advocacy, what was done before, and, and the motion that was brought before the parliament in the past that died on the order paper, all of those things have been in there, so to me, it was straightforward, but if, definitely, if it makes you more comfortable, I'm happy to make an amendment.
Fair enough, make your amendment, thank you.
Okay, so amendment to.
Councillor McDougall, would you like to move the amendment?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I don't exactly know what the amendment should say, because I don't know the, exactly how the call is read. So it's certainly for educational and historical purposes, should be the amendment at least, but I don't know what else it says. Oh, for other religious purposes, I, I'm not, I'm not clear, I didn't do the research on this motion.
No, I, I understand.
Understood.
Councillor Leahy?
Yeah, we could make an amendment to, or we could just reemphasize that all of the, all of the pieces that are in the Benai Breth motion are included in here, because it's already included in their call, which is what this is to endorse what's already out there. Could we make that as a third point?
Mr. Clerk, including that motion from, from Benai Breth into this motion, would that suffice?
We can include it as an attachment to the motion.
So we can include that as an attachment to the motion?
Sure.
Which might get you to where councillor McDougall might make you more comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, so the clerk will take that as direction if this passes?
Perfect. Hopefully that addresses.
And it will show up in the Cal report to council?
Yes, and we'll just, we'll ratify it, that counts.
Sorry, I just, for clarity, I'm just seeking clarity for, when a layperson reads this and they don't understand the call, they understand what we're passing, thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Mayor Schumer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, just briefly and quickly, I do support the intent, and I'll support, you know, the, the amendment going through. I trust that when this reaches Ottawa, if it's going to move along, they will test it against the Charter. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned and disappointed that, that none of the delegates really even knew why the prior piece of legislation in parliament died, because it addressed this, it addressed more than just the swastika, it addressed symbols of hate in general. So I'll be very interested to see where this goes, because it does, it does touch on issues in our society, both in protecting people from hate, but also it, it starts to touch on, on rights. And, you know, I know there's other countries in the world that have passed legislation, but they don't have our Charter of Rights and Freedoms. I know, I know China doesn't, for sure, but I, I really, I, I can trust, hopefully, whatever happens in the, in parliament to protect everybody, and I certainly endorse the, the ideas behind this, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, a recorded vote was asked by, by councillor Leahy, so I will call that vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, recorded vote on the motion is starting now. Looking for mayors Ash and Collier online. Second call. Last call for mayors Ash and Collier online.
So members of council, there was 19 votes cast, that was unanimous, seeing that I still have quorum, we'll move on. 8.3, a motion regarding Made in Canada approach to procurement, located on page 124 of your agenda, councillor Leahy. Councillor Yamada, you're still the seconder of this? Thank you and good afternoon.
All right, and thank you all for coming here. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'll just read this briefly, it's a short one, that we recommend to regional council, whereas possible tariffs from the United States, the US would threaten local jobs and the economy in Brampton and, uh, Whitby, it's supposed to say Whitby. Do I make an amendment now, or should I just speak it out? Yeah, it's just a friendly, and, so you can see where I got the idea from. Whereas the other orders of government are preparing to respond to such threats, and whereas all municipalities like the Durham region are major producers of goods and services, and whereas the Durham region purchasing bylaw upholds respect for trade agreements with respect reference, specific reference to SEDA between Canada and EU, but nothing specific to the United States, therefore be it resolved that regional staff report back as soon as possible on a Made in Canada procurement policy exception in response to tariff threats from the US, should they be implemented, and this motion be forwarded to the Durham Member Municipalities FCM and AMO. So if I can just speak to that, so part of it is, and we all got a memo earlier today speaking to what's possible and not possible, so that is, that's great. My question is to staff is, A, I'm hoping that everybody can support this, I think we're all in alignment regardless of your political strike, but we are all under threat from, from threats from the US around economic activity, tariffs, jobs, you name it, it's, it's unprecedented times. My, my question through to staff, if I'm able to ask in the open, would we be able to adjust our policies, or what's a reasonable timeframe for us to make some type of adjustment?
Go to our C A O.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe the memo you received this morning talked about some of the activities that we're undertaking right away. We will be compiling a, a working group to look at this more carefully, but legal and our purchasing staff are already digging well into this. I would think that we will need a couple of months before we report back with any information in addition to what was in the confidential briefing note that was circulated today.
No, okay, so a couple of months, so that's, that's super helpful, because it's, there's opportunities, and we are, we are going to be able to come with some type of adjustments to our policy, if my understanding is correct, is that, is that a fair statement, that we can do something?
We are already doing some things, as you'll note in the briefing note, and we are looking into what additional acts we can take. Any additional acts will likely require approval of council, or a request for legislative change.
No, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the quick action of staff on this particular issue, and again, unprecedented times, when I open up my, my X or Twitter account, I don't know what the change in direction is going to be coming from the US that's going to impact jobs here in Whitby and Durham region, so anything that's within our control to adjust on a, basically promoting buying Canadian and, and basically non-US, people that aren't, are, aren't threatening tariffs against us, is a much better approach, so I appreciate that. Recorded vote, and I really appreciate the effort from staff today. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair.
So I, I cannot go any further, Mr. Clerk, I need a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, members of council, we have, we're at 16. Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, depending on how long this goes, it might diminish, so I'll support the motion, but it's entirely redundant. I want to, I want to thank staff for what they've done, we've got a memo, we've got suggestions in terms of the impact, staff have been all over this, and, and we're all well aware of it. I hope that members of the community are, are well aware of, of the work that staff are doing, and what we're trying to do to protect our residents, our local jobs, and our local businesses. So, again, not going to belabor it, but this is entirely redundant, and Madam C A O, to your staff, please give my congratulations for the work that they have done.
Thank you. Mayor Carter?
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I, I'll be absolutely honest with you, I don't want us making up our strategies over the back of a napkin or the corner of our desk. I think that staff have done a tremendous job about making sure that we have clear understanding of what we know today in regards to the challenges we're facing. I'm very uncomfortable with us making decisions like this, because one way or another, we're going to affect people that make their living on the front lines, right in our community. And so, you know, we're going to start making decisions in regards to what we think is the right thing about procurement of services from other countries that are delivered by Canadians and residents of Durham region, that don't have a choice in regards to what they're trying to do, all they're trying to do is provide for their fam. So I'm not going to support this, I, I want to give staff the proper amount of time, we're working with the, the premier and other premiers across the country and federal representatives. I want us not to run on fear and anxiety.
want us not to run on fear and anxiety and anger. I want us to be strategic and well thought of. I want us to work as, I think you're, the CAO and yourself, Mr. Chairman, are trying to encourage, which is bringing us together, not dividing us, and really coming up with something that is strategic. Mayor Foster just spoke, his community, our community of Oshawa, and communities all across the region of Durham have already been named as, as in the top 20 that could be affected by these tariffs, and what it could do in regards to unemployment. I want us to be strategic, not reactionary, and words matter right now. So I caution everyone to think this one through, but I will not be supporting it. I'm going to continue to work with your Economic Development Department, Mr. Chairman, our Economic Development Department, the Premier's Office, and other levels of government to come out with a strategy that, that really addresses what we factually know and how we can address it in a strategic way and not, not just be reactionary. Our public right now doesn't need us to be angry and fearful, and they don't need us speculating. They need us to be factual. They need us to be strategic, and they need to know that we have a plan moving forward. And that's where I stand on this measure.
Okay, I'm going to have our CAO comment.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I think it's important to take a holistic view to this. So council did receive a confidential memorandum today dealing specifically with procurement. Earlier in the week, you received a longer briefing note that could be, that is a public document, so it is possible to share it, that did talk about our more global approach to this, which included addressing the potential impact on our residents and the potential impact on our businesses, as well as procurement and the impact on the region as a whole, because should tariffs go in place, it will most definitely impact our capital and possibly our operating budgets. On top of that, I think it's really important to know that we are working hand in hand with our local municipalities, as well as with the regional and single tier municipalities, with AMO and with FCM. So there is a very holistic province and even nationwide approach to this, where we are all sharing our research with respect to procurement options, opportunities, and challenges, and any other initiatives that can be taken to minimize the impact. I think it's important to have that total complex, that content. The procurement component is only one piece of this.
So I'm going to go to Mayor Schumer next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just get clarification? I mean, I, I see this motion asking for a staff report, right? We're not actually dictating any change to procurement. Am I correct here?
My understanding is that we're being requested for a staff report that will look at how, the latitude we have under current procurement legislation and bylaws to determine where we can use that bylaw to mitigate the impact of potential tariffs. So we're already putting in some short-term measures that staff have the authority to do. Anything else, as I said earlier, requires more legal work and will likely require legislative changes. But as I read this, it is looking for us to recommend changes to procurement.
So.
It, it's looking for us to look at changes, but it's asking for essentially what, I think, I think Mayor Foster said it, that it's a bit redundant. But, but I support it because it's simply asking for something to come back to us with recommendations on what we can, can't, or, you know, possibly could change. So I, I'm not sure that it's a knee-jerk reaction. It's simply asking for what seems to be coming anyway.
So, did you want to respond to that?
The only thing I will say is yes. Any significant procurement changes, as you would have seen in the memorandum, will require that we come back to council at the appropriate time. The only thing I would reiterate again is that procurement is only one piece of this. We also have to look at the impact on individuals within the community, businesses obviously, and procurement will assist with that, as well as the impact on our regional government and on our social services and public health clientele. So we are working across Durham and across, I would say, Ontario and Canada in taking a holistic approach to this, as opposed to just carving out the procurement piece. But absolutely, staff will be coming back, should it make any further changes to the procurement bylaw that would require council approval.
So, members of council, oh, sorry, counsel, Mayor Schumer, are you finished? Okay. Members of council, I would be much more comfortable in, with this is along the lines that, that council direct Durham staff to strike a working group to take on a strategic review of procurement and work with other municipal partners where appropriate, including look at whether some projected timing should be reassessed, and that a review will be directed to achieve three aims. To ensure Durham region's procurement is resilient to the financial supply chain and other risks associated with the changing Canadian-US trade relationship. Two, to align Durham's procurement to take advantage of opportunities arising from the reduction of interprovincial trade barriers, support of local businesses, and the development of new strategic trading partners. And three, to inform and support economic development in a mission, in a mission to assist local businesses in adapting and aligning to, to a renewed focus on strengthening Canadian businesses within, with a view to increase the amount of Canadian and local businesses who are competing and winning in Durham's procurement activities. I would be much more comfortable with something like that. And if the mover, and there's a list here. So I think, you know, from a wording perspective, I think that's the wording. You would have to withdraw the original motion, and then I would ask for a motion that would do those three things to give our staff and our partners at the municipal level the ability to do their work that you're very asking for now, but worded in a way that gives them direction to strike a working group, which is needed, and that would support the direction that I think you're trying to, to achieve. But I have a speaker's list. So it would take the mover and the secondary would have to withdraw their motion.
So you could amend it by striking the final paragraph of the current motion and inserting the text?
So if, so I, I just, so I'm talking to the clerk, and it's always hard to take and amend stuff like this on the floor. So, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to ask for, for direction on how we take the motion that is before us and put the part here. So I would, I would take, yeah, it basically is from there to the end, which would be to direct staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Henry has provided us with some wording, which he just read out to members. Our recommendation would be that the motion be amended by striking the final paragraph of the motion and replacing it with the wording that was provided by Chair Henry, and we're able to bring that up on screen in a moment.
So, Mr. Clerk, would you accept, accept that as an amendment? So normally, I would never move an amendment from the chair, so I'll go to Counselor McDougal. And, but the challenge we have is there's a speakers, there's a speaker's list. So let me go through this. When we exhaust the speaker's list, then I'll come back to you for the motion. Okay, Mr. Clerk? Are you comfortable with that? Okay. So next on the speaker's list is Counselor Yamada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think whatever we do going forward, that this talk about tariffs, it's been a wake-up call to all of us, all political leaders, who are now forced to put our national interests ahead of special interests. Canadians expect, all of us, to do what it takes to make our country more self-reliant and less dependent on the Americans. And whatever we can do from a procurement perspective, I think residents in our community will get behind that, because my fundamental belief is that trade starts at home. Trade barriers between Canadian provinces are more costly than trade barriers between Canada and other nations. The result is that we now trade more with the rest of the world than we do with ourselves. In 2023, international trade was worth 66% of GDP, while interprovincial, provincial trade was only worth 36%. To me, that makes no sense. When we look at what we're hearing from economists, they estimate that eliminating all interprovincial trade barriers would boost Canada's economy by as much as 7.9%, generate an economic boost of $200 billion per year, or 1,500 per person. And when I talk to residents and I hear about affordability, whether it's gas, groceries, rent, or the mortgage, they're struggling. And if we can look at our trade policies, whether from a local level, to a provincial level, to a federal level, of how that can better support our residents, I think that's a good thing. You know, I think a plan that would allow premiers to remove as many exemptions as possible would be a good thing. Prioritizing an agreement on one standard set of trucking rules to get billions of dollars of goods moving east-west instead of going north-south, this move alone would boost GDP by 1.6 billion. I think when we look at the end of the day, and we think to ourselves, what can we do better for our residents, offering, having provinces offer free trade bonuses to get deals. Every trade barrier removed by provinces will generate more GDP and more revenue. And I think what we could do is look at asking the federal government for that tax revenue back to the provinces to remove trade barriers so that they can spend it on schools, hospitals, and whatever premiers choose. This bonus would be paid out of boosted federal government revenues from tree, from free trade. And it would not, we'd ask that it wouldn't be added to any further debt. So I support going forward with this motion. I support doing everything we can to ensure that we are doing everything for our residents in the face of an unfair trade war that was started by the Americans. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so now that, Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm playing with my volume. The external speakers are really loud, and you are very quiet. So anyway, really quickly, thank you, thank you for this. I think important, we address in the amendment beyond made in Canada, because we need to find alternate trading partners, which is addressed here as well. I don't think we can lose sight of the number of residents. It's, it's easy to suggest that we stop shopping. I'll, I'll use Walmart as an example. But, you know, our residents work there. And, and some of our residents are not going to be able to find jobs outside of what are identified as US companies. So as, as this working group moves forward, and to Mayor Carter's point, we're going to have to be strategic. We're going to have to take holistic approach to this. It is, I think the clerk was talking about untangling a Gordian knot. That was procedural rules. This one's bigger and way more complicated. So thank you for this, sir.
So thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to take the amendment now. Moved by Counselor McDougal. Counselor Crawford, do you want to second this? Seconded by Counselor Crawford. So that is the amendment. We're going to vote on the amendment. Did you want to speak to this?
Really briefly, just if we can share, share with the same folks.
It's right in the motion. That work with other municipality partners? So we are establishing a working group with our municipal partners, unless you want to include AMO?
Just, yeah, AMO is the.
Okay, the appropriate, okay, group. Okay, on the amendment, is there anyone wishing to speak to the amendment? Seeing none, we'll call the vote on the amendment. Mr. Clerk, are we confident we have quorum? Do we need to do a recorded vote on the amendment?
Let's do a recorded vote.
Recorded vote on the amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the amendment to item 8.3 is starting now.
Counselor Anderson, did you want to speak on the main motion as amended?
I will just say the last word.
Thank you. Okay, votes cast are 17, so that carries. So on the main motion is amended, we have 17. Recorded vote, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the main motion as amended is starting now.
We have one more motion.
And Counselor Wu. And looking for Mayor Schumer online. And Mayor Collier online. Second call for Mayor Collier. Last call for Mayor Collier.
Okay, so that carries. So, members of council, the next one is motion 8.4. It's a gun, relates to gun amnesty motion. Counselor Leahy, you cannot move it because your secondary is not here?
Can we just defer?
So we can defer it to council, Mr. Clerk? Do, we don't need a motion to do that, do we? Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Moved by Counselor McDougal, seconded by Counselor Anderson, that we defer item 8.4 to our next scheduled council meeting?
Yes, February 26.
February 26. On the deferral. All those in favor? Okay, members of council, confidential matter 9.1, committee of the report, committee report 2025-Cow-8. Just give me one second. Is there anyone wishing it, wishing to pull this? Don't see any. Recorded vote on the recommendation. Need a mover and a secondary on the report? Counselor Crawford? Counselor Wu? Thank you. It's not easy when you only have five in the council chamber, so, so thank you. So the, the report's now on the floor. Okay. I see no, no one calling for us to go into closed session on this, so I'm going to call the vote now. Recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on item 9.1 is starting now.
Okay, that carries. Members of council, before I call for the adjournment vote, it was mentioned earlier that we have a number of large US-based corporations located in Ontario. But when people go into those organizations to shop, their frustration should not be taken out on the people that work there. They are friends, our neighbors, our family members. If they have a challenge, write a letter to the parent company. But don't have your argument with someone who's in there just trying to make a living and, and pay their rent to feed their families. That is, that is just not, not appropriate, nor is it Canadian. On that note, Counselor Anderson, I need a motion for adjournment. And I'll look for a secondary. First hand up was Counselor Leahy. Before I call for the final vote, Mr. Clerk, that is the business of the day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call the vote now. All those in favor. In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We are adjourned.